I would like to call the June 12th School Board Meeting to order. Wichita Public Schools will be the district of choice in our region where all students and staff are empowered to dream, believe, and achieve. Would you please join me in a moment of silence? Thank you. Our colors tonight are presented by Cadet Sergeant Karen Perez and Cadet Corporal Malagros Casada. Would you please stand for the presentation of our colors?
Colors, action. Carry, colors. Forward, march. Mark time, march. Colors, all. Left, face. Present, colors. President Logan requested to post the colors.
You may post the colors.
Thank you, ma'am. Order, colors. Center, face. Post. Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. Present, arms.
Our pledge is allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Order, arms. Outer, face. Forward, march.
Please join me in thanking our North High cadets.[157.13][157.13][applause] They always do such a great job for us, we appreciate it. First item, Patrick?
First item, under reports, good news.
Good evening, President Logan, Superintendent-elect Beilefeld, members of the board. I am thrilled to be here tonight to share three good news items with you. I love it when the goodness continues into the summer because people often wonder if a whole lot goes on during the summer, and I would say emphatically, yes, it does. So, we're going to celebrate tonight first by introducing you to some folks that have become friends of our community through their willingness to allow us to share their WPS story. So, before I tell you anymore about this project and introduce you to them, I would like to ask them all to come forward and stand to my left. I believe strongly that our stories connect us to one another, they connect us to the school district, and they certainly connect us to our community. The My WPS Story Series features district employees. All of these folks you see here are district employees or recently retired who embody WPS pride and whose stories show the value of public education and the impact that our district and our people have on a broader community. Kind of gives me chills to say that. Eighteen stories this year, our first year in the WPS Story Series, demonstrated life-changing impact that the time these folks have spent with us, either as a student or as a staff member. It demonstrates inspiration for future success from a teacher or a program and certainly inspires those who read about their stories to see what could be ahead for them. Introduces us to families with multiple members who are part of the WPS family, and we have at least two of those stories here tonight. And these stories celebrate individuals who have grown professionally within the district. I appreciate board members who were able to come over and meet these folks individually. We have made the decision to continue on with here too of this story series, and we keep getting really cool inquiries and referrals and folks talking about other stories, and we do have plans and hopes to expand into our alumni community because there was not a time over the last 10 days that I didn't talk to someone who has been in the WPS family and who has a story to share. And it's really cool to see how we're all connected through the WPS family. So, tonight, we want you to have a chance to meet the folks who said yes when we asked them about this new idea we had to tell different kinds of stories to help inspire and celebrate the WPS community. I hope you've all had a chance to see them, but if not, and those of you watching can go to usd259.org/MyWPSStory, and all of the stories for the folks here and those who weren't able to make it are available to watch. On behalf of the Strategic Communications Team, I want to say thank you to all of you for allowing us a glimpse into your worlds and your lives and your story and for trusting us to tell those stories. And I want to recognize Maria Loving. Where's Maria?[420.38][420.38][laughter] She's there. She's always covering the stories, and she probably doesn't like that I'm calling her out, but I'm calling her out anyway. And Jennifer Bellinger-Sipes up in the booth, and Susan Ornsman and Maria Curry from our team who are not here tonight because they are the ones that have been entrusted to share those stories with all of you. So, I would like to invite each of these individuals to introduce themselves to you so you and all of our viewers have a chance to see them, and then I think they're prepared to share one item that makes WPS special or that they're proud of in being members of this district community. So, I'm going to ask Miguel and Maya Sabas to go first because they were the very first ones, when we called them with this crazy idea, who were willing to say yes. So, I would like them to start, come forward with introductions, and Superintendent-elect Beilefeld and President Logan, if you could come forward, we do have certificates of appreciation to share with you, and I would like our leaders to do the honors. So, friends?
Hello, my name is Maya La Sabas, and I am at Jordine Middle School, and I've been there for the last 12 years.
Miguel Sabas, and I'm here at North High, one of the counselors here.
This journey started last spring. Wendy, Susan, and Maria called us and say, hey, we have this idea. And I was like, oh, okay. We were hesitant, we were like, do we want to share our story? And I'm so happy we did. We are the original trailblazers, the original OGs.[530.04][530.04][laughter] I am just grateful for this district. As an English language learner, a lot of you know my story. I walked into a Wichita Public School when I was five years old, only knowing two words, ice cream and teacher. And with the support of teachers, staff members, I then learned the language, became inspired to become an educator, and am able to give back to my community. I love WPS because of the diversity.
Well, you know, behind every great man, there's even greater woman, so I just tag along for the ride.[572.54][572.54][laughter] But, you know, just like my wife just said, I came here knowing no English as a fourth grader. Wichita Public Schools gave me the entry to learn English and become bilingual, and now I get to help some of the kids that face similar situations that I did navigate high school and then post-secondary education.
Thank you.[596.66][596.66][applause]
Hello and welcome. My name is Marieva Muniz Glenn, and I feel like I've been an educator all of my life. And I'm 82 years old, just for the record, and I'm still substitute teaching. I work at Jefferson Elementary, and this is my second year here in Wichita. I started out in the valley, which is Harlingen down in Texas. I think I started when I was four years of age at Immaculate Heart of Mary School, and it was paprochial school, Catholic school. So, I've been in the teaching mode since I was four years old, so that gives me a long time. But I started out that way, have two older brothers, two older sisters and a brother, which they went there, and so they allowed me to go in because I had siblings going to school there. And ever since I started that, I thought, okay. My two sisters and my brother, they're 10 and nine years older than I am, and my brother passed away, but he was six years older. And I heard him speaking English all the time, I didn't know what it was, I just knew Spanish at that point in time. I was the baby of the family, you know, everybody caters to the baby, and so I didn't learn English until I started school at four years of age. And from then on, I'll tell you what, I hated running, I just loved it, I have learned so much. In high school, I wasn't the brightest kid, but I learned my language, English and Spanish. So, from there, I taught about 35 years, I think it was, in Texas, and then last year, two years ago, moved to Kansas. My daughter lives here, and my granddaughter lives here too, and their families. And so, I decided, all right, let's get back. I've taught for 35 years and have subbed for 20, so I thought, well, why not keep going at my age? So, 82 and still going strong, and I work at Jefferson Elementary, which have, they have a newcomers class that is so cool, and I feel like I can relate to them because that's how I started. And I started out being, what are they talking, what is that gibberish that they're saying in English, you know? And my way of learning English was, I would just jabber, gibber, and then they'd say, well, what are you saying? Oh, that's English for such and such, and I'd say it in Spanish. It wasn't anything, it was just gibberish. So, anyway, I know where the students are coming from, they have been there, I've been there, so I continue to do that. I am so proud to be working here in Wichita, so thank you very much.[788.44][788.44][applause]
Good evening. My name is Chris Brown. I work at Franklin Elementary, mixed abilities teacher there at K through 5. I started off coming to Wichita, played football for the Wichita Wild, things didn't work out. We got to volunteer at Levy Special Ed, and those kids just kind of just pulled at my heartstrings, which is something about the Special Ed kids that I felt like I needed to be a part of. Started doing my para job, had a lot of people influence and just kind of pushed me to be a teacher, went back and got my teaching degree, and now here I am. This is my fourth year, just finished as the lead teacher. I kind of look back, my mom always tells me things happen for a reason, I feel like I belong here, I feel like I need to be here. I'm a big kid as it is, so working with the elementary kids, it's perfect for me, but just being able to give back to those kids and just, you know, be somebody for them, be a voice for those kids that don't have them. Again, working with Special Ed kids, so somebody needs to advocate for them, and I'll be the biggest advocate out there, so I appreciate you guys having me, thank you, thank you.[866.86][866.86][applause]
Todd Sanchez, I'm the principal at Linwood Elementary here in Wichita. I was a student in USD 259 all the way pre-K through high school, and I think that the support I received as a student, as a teacher, as administrator has been significant, and I just continue to watch the teachers I work with and our district just continue to invest in our community, and that's just, it's significant. It had a significant impact on me, I watch it have a significant impact on kids every day. In my spare time. So, I'm in the Kansas Army National Guard, this is my 21st year, and again, that support, I take things to the guard that are just unique, that not every person brings to that scenario, and I bring things from the guard back to my school, and it really is a big engagement piece with staff, with kids, with anybody, just sharing my story on both sides. It's a great connection with people.[951.01][951.01][applause]
I'm a major retired, Andy Trager, leadership instructor at Pleasant Valley Middle School for the last 26 years. Wichita Public Schools gave me the opportunity to come down from Iowa and design the middle school program that I've been teaching for the last 26 years, and retired at the end of the school year. The opportunities that we've had for the students at Pleasant Valley and the other programs with leadership has just been an outstanding opportunity, and it's been a wonderful experience for the last 26 years. I'm going to really miss teaching, but like I said, you know, the program has some awesome new people coming in to take over, and it's going to be successful, so thanks.[1004.23][1004.23][applause]
Hello, I'm Mary Sebastian, and I work at Stanley Elementary, administrative assistant, going on my 24th year. These are two of my daughters, they have also worked at Stanley, and then we have one in New York that has worked at Stanley, so.
I'm Amy Sebastian, I've been in the district for, this is my 12th year. I started out as a mixed abilities para. I did that for about nine years, and now I'm going to school to be a speech-language pathologist, and I'm now a speech and language assistant for the district.
And I'm Molly Blades, and I worked for the district for 10 years. I was a first grade teacher and an ESOL para, and I'm going to quit to stay home with my new baby. So, they interviewed us because we've all worked at the same school, and us as kids went there, our mom volunteered there while we were children, and so it's, Stanley's super nudged in our heart, it's our home, and so we love Wichita Public Schools, so yeah, thank you.
Good evening, Wichita Public Schools, this is Art Ballios, I teach at East. I'm grateful for what USC 259 had done to my family. I would say we are grateful, my wife is over there, we are all USC 259 staff, my kids are over there. One unique thing about my story is USC 259 brought us here from the Philippines 17 years ago. So, I was part of that first Filipino teachers, and I would say that we are grateful for that, giving us opportunity, rich environment to grow professionally. Since then, I never looked back, I just keep moving forward. As a matter of fact, I just finished my sabbatical leave last semester, finishing my doctorate degree at KU, and hoping to work, get a leadership position in USC 259 and just keep growing, and hoping to continue to serve the best premier institution in the region, best staff to work with, the most diverse teachers to teach, and I'm so excited, thankful for what you have done to my family. Actually, I renounced my Filipino citizenship and took American citizenship. This is our home.
Hi, my name is Jessica Mao. This is the end of my 19th year in the district, all of which have been serving ESOL students. I am a newcomer teacher and am just very honored to be a part of those students' journeys with them, coming from all walks and places all over the world. It's been such an inspiring walk with them. They come from, you know, no education to very little education to having a full-on education in their home countries. So, it's just been awesome to be able to try and showcase their cultures and their languages as I've worked with them throughout these years, so I'm very proud and honored to be a part of them.[1241.78][1241.78][applause] I was at Curtis for 15 years, I'm going to be a Red Hawk next year, so I will be here at North next year doing ESOL, yeah.[1251.48][1251.48][applause]
Good evening, board members, my name is Leroy Parks, just finished my 32nd year in the district, and Wendy was not truthful, I did not say yes immediately, her and Maria, I was one of the no's, that's true. But seriously, I, my story is, I'm born and raised in Wichita, went to school in Wichita Public Schools, and a lady by the name of Jan Davis, when I was coming through a crazy program called Isley Alternative School, and most people, some people don't know, I've never really told people, but I had an IEP myself, I had a gifted label, and I was BD, Behavior Disorder, so, I know, imagine that. But Jan took me, took me in, her and Sam Spate, and this lady, beautiful lady over here hired me for my first administration job, and took a chance on this little crazy kid, assistant principal at Heights High School at the time, and I'm proud to say that I'm the principal of Chester Lewis Alternative High School after 32 years in this district. I feel like I've kind of come full circle, I'm back with my people and my kids, you know? So, my story is pretty simple, born and raised, went away for a little bit, came back, I'm looking over at Gil, Mr. Alvarez and I go back, and some of the connections that I have now, Jessica, I hired Jessica for her first job at Marshall, 19, you said 19 years?
Yeah.
Wow, it's getting, getting old, so, but everywhere I go, every opportunity that I've had to share about the Wichita Public Schools, I do it, and I've had some opportunities to have it to travel, and there's no better district, no better district out there than the one that I'm proud to serve and work for, so that's my story.[1389.53][1389.53][applause]
Thank you all once again for allowing us to hear your stories and to trust us to share. That's cool. That was cool. And thank you for allowing us the time to introduce all of these folks to you, this has been a really special project. We have two other good news items tonight to share with you, both of which have Wichita Public Schools on the national map. So, the first one, I'm going to invite Kimberly Hughes forward. We all know Hamilton, right? Hamilton is at Century 2 now. Kimberly and her students win the opportunity to see Hamilton on Broadway, the Hamilton. The power of the arts is real, and it's amazing what she has done to expose her students to those opportunities, so we wanted to invite her here to share this amazing story with you and to celebrate excellence on a national level.
Thank you for the opportunity to share about what my kids have done in the last four years. Five years ago, I had a student who said, hey, Ms. Hughes, have you heard of Hamilton? And I'm like, the school? And they're like, no, no, the musical. I was like, oh, oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. And so, they gave me a copy of the soundtrack. I was hooked, I'm like, oh my God, I can do this, I can teach that, I can teach this about founding era. And then I found out that the Gilder Lerman Institute of American History out of New York had partnered with Hamilton, and for the New York City Public Schools, they were providing opportunities for those title schools to go and see it live. And on top of that, there was a competition, whereas they researched primary sources on the founding era. It could be any person, any event, any battle that took place. And from that research, they created a two-minute rap, or poem, or song, or skit. I begged Gilder Lerman, please let others do this. It was only for high school. I teach middle school. And so, finally, I think they got tired of me nagging them, and they finally opened it up nationwide. The first year that we competed, those students are now junior, well, now seniors, they placed in the top 10 in the nation as eighth graders, and we were up mostly against high school students. My second year, we were on COVID, COVID hit. So, my first year, when we placed, which was in the 2019, 2020, or 20, yeah, so anyways, we find out February, end of February, you won an all-expense-paid trip to New York City, flights, they got a check for like 230 bucks for two days. Hamilton, we stayed in a hotel right across the street in Times Square, literally like 20 feet. And then March happened, and the world shut down. But Gilder Lerman said, when Broadway opens up again, you can come back, you can come. They honored that, and then last November, those students who had won got to go. Not only that, when we were on lockdown and totally remote, I offered again for the kids to do it, they did it online. Young lady recorded herself, Janelle, she is going to be a junior now at Southeast, she recorded herself doing the beat in front of her computer, kind of gray looking because we didn't turn the lights on, you know, during, you know, distance learning, and she placed. So, last November, I got to take both of those. Third year that we did it, we didn't place, that's okay, you know, we did it two years in a row. This year, those three amazing students who are blessing several high schools this coming fall, they placed in the top 10. They did a parody of King George to Katy Perry's California Girls, and I wish I would have sent it because it is hilarious. So, we have, to the left in the gray hoodie, that's Alexa Horseman, she's at a volleyball camp, couldn't be here. In the middle, Irene Ruckel, she had a family obligation. And then to the right is Ben Sackett, and he's at church camp, so that's why they couldn't come tonight, but wow, three out of the four years, three all-expense-paid trips to New York City, and I'm telling you, we were in the room where it happened. It was awesome. So, we will not throw away our shot, and we will do it again this year, so. Anyways, very proud, I'm at Mayberry, and these kids embody what a cultural and fine arts magnet school can do.[1724.65][1724.65][applause]
I have a question, very much appreciated. I have a question.
Oh, yes, I probably haven't answered. And I didn't get to go on this trip.
Oh.
I had emergency back surgery, so I had three wonderful teachers who went in my place, so.
I wanted to ask you, can you get that video of that and have Wendy play it at our next board meeting?
Yep, I'll send it to Wendy tonight.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
And congratulations, that's so spectacular.
Thank you. It was all them, they gave up their lunch and recess time for two months to come in and work, so, pretty awesome.
That's the wonderful thing that our teachers do, she gave up her lunches to help the kids, thank you.
All right, our third good news item allows the distinguished Sean Chastain, Executive Coordinator of Fine Arts, to share the official good news that for the seventh out of the last 10 years, Wichita Public Schools has been named a national best communities for music education. As a former music ed kid, that makes my heart about as full as it could be, and it's a pleasure to invite Sean forward for And it's a pleasure to invite Sean forward for our third good news item to share more with you about it.
Thank you, Wendy, and good evening, everyone. And as she mentioned, yes, Wichita Public Schools has been named a 2023 Best Communities for Music Education designation from the NAMM Foundation. And I invite you, as the slides come up, to enjoy some of our picks from this past year, celebrating many district-level music events, which represent just a fraction of the talent and instruction that takes place in our buildings and our classrooms on a daily basis. Now, in its 24th year, the Best Communities for Music Education designation from the National Association of Music Merchants is awarded to districts that demonstrate outstanding achievements in efforts to provide music access and education to all students. And I appreciate Wendy, and I don't think it hurts to repeat, that again, in the past seven years, WPS has won this award. Past 10 years, WPS has won this award seven times. To qualify for the Best Communities designation, I answer detailed questions about funding, graduation requirements, music class participation, instruction time, facilities, support for the music program, and community music-making programs. So thanks to the talent and dedication of our 165 K-12 music teachers and our 25,000 music students, our tremendous Board of Education District and Building Administration representative here tonight, it's truly one of the easiest applications I've ever filled out. In fact, just in the past 25 years, this board, district, and community have supported significant music facility improvements through bond and capital funds. Outstanding dedicated rehearsal and performance upgrades that our own Facilities Division continues to coordinate with exceptional detail. And Julie, I don't know how many meetings we sat in back in the day and how many district auditoriums we visited as a reference, but it was worth it. And as a side note, many of our spaces also double as safe rooms. Our Learning Service Division and Curriculum Instruction Departments support a district-level fine arts office tasked with supporting our music students and staff that coordinate the entire curriculum, as well as support our area and all-city music concerts, our music assessments, our district performances like Band Orama, Orchestra Showcase, Choral Showcase, and Jazz in the Round, which Deputy Superintendent Alvarez and President Logan know, we brought back the Faculty Jazz Band this year. We also have a tremendous Strategic Communication Program and Department. These two ladies to my left are everywhere. They publicize everything we do and give us the opportunity to perform at numerous district and community connections. Our Human Resources Department, just as they do with every subject, hire the best music instructors available. Our Facilities Division also transports equipment to football games and other district shows, while also supporting a tremendous music instrument repair department that maintains our district inventory. Our Finance and Operations Departments go nonstop to help us secure the best music purchases and services. Our elementary and secondary offices are also in and out of our music rooms, supporting such a strong general choral and instrumental music program in elementary, middle, and high schools. And since 2018, our administration building is now what I call our newest recital hall. I'd like to add another A to the AMAC, Alvin Morris Administrative and Audition Center, as we are so welcoming and support the many schools that come to our auditorium to perform. And of course, what better foundation is there than our own education edge that has been providing hundreds of beginning band and orchestra instruments for the past two decades? However, what is most humbling is when I look straight ahead and to my right, I've learned of practically everyone's personal music experiences and support of music education, whether as a district leader, educator, parent, student, even as a former WPS student. And I'd like to continue the theme from tonight. I still have my picture when Dr. Thompson and I were in band together and my own all-city program when I had to participate. Equally as humbling is that now the vast majority of you probably saw a slide in there where you were like, oh, yeah, I was at that performance. And one of our most recent school performances was attended by the most recent member at the board table, Superintendent-elect Bielefeld, who was there in his official capacity, but we both agreed most important as a band camp parent. And of course, seeing our former admiral down the street at the River Fest Parade was a treat for all of us. In closing, while we are here to celebrate this year, our district and community can point with pride to a longstanding tradition of achievement of music in the Wichita Public Schools. Music education in the Wichita Public Schools began in the year 1887, when it has been taught by specialists ever since. Jesse Clark, our first music teacher and supervisor, pioneered the first high school choir in 1895, the first orchestra in 1905, and the band in 1912 in Wichita's high school, and began the special citywide concerts in 1900 and instituted elementary programs in 1919. As a side note for Ms. Clark, the pipe organ at East High, one of only a handful of pipe organs in the American high schools still today, was given an honor of her memory. And 70 years ago this year, Jesse Clark Elementary School was open. Ms. Clark built an enviable reputation as a music teacher and was also recognized as a leader in civic and music circles. So while the present-day Wichita owes its much to its dedicated founder, I believe Ms. Clark would be proud of all of us tonight and our role in Wichita Public Schools' nationally-recognized honor. Thank you.
Ernestine.
Yes.
Go ahead, Ernestine.
Would you be able to get a group of those students together to play at one of our?
Would you be able to get a group of these musicians together to play at one of our board meetings in the future? I know it's summer now, it would not be a good idea.
Absolutely. I think that's my biggest role is as a gig manager for our students. Happy to do it, honored to do it. We'll be back with music.
I am not at all surprised that we won it for the seventh year because our programs are truly outstanding. If you have not been to our music programs, all kinds of programs, you would be amazed. They're as good as professionals. They are really fun concerts, fun band, fun jazz to go to. So take advantage. We posted on our website. Take advantage of our programs. Most of them are free and we have a great program. Thank you.
Thanks for always being there, too. All of you.
You've changed a little bit, Sean. Thank you. Next item.
Next item, under Reports, Service Employees International.
I do not see ESOL, so next item.
Next item, under Reports, United Teachers of Wichita.
Hi, Mike, come on down.
Good evening, President Logan, Vice President Albert, members of the School Board, Superintendent Bielefeld, who I think I finally pronounced your name correctly, and I apologize for all the times I haven't, and to all the valued members of our district administration and community. It's been an amazing summer already, and I'm extremely proud to see the Wichita Public Schools be represented so well across our community this summer. I would like to take one second to mention that the Honorable Mr. Chastain was also the Northeast Area Honor Choir Director when I was in fifth grade. And I got the pleasure of going to Coleman and being under his tutelage. And I don't think he ever expected me. I'd still be a thorn in his side to this day. I looked up the other night and I saw our own Director of Strategic Communications and former Admiral Windwagon Smith, Wendy Johnson, watching over the community that she spent her entire life serving. And I felt a bit in awe. Each night at the festival, I heard Wichita residents cheer on their alma maters as our schooner mates from USD 259 introduced themselves and represented our district with both energy and enthusiasm. I was also excited to see that my Southeast Buffaloes won the inaugural rivalry on the rivory, rivalry on the river at the River Festival. And so it was great to see our students performing for the community.
Thank you.
As we find ourselves in the midst of the season of transitions, the time is ripe to set on our focus on building bridges for a united tomorrow. The significance of bridges cannot be understated. They connect us, they support us, and they lead us to new possibilities. I stand here as the Vice President of United Teachers of Wichita, a Wichita Public School alum, the parent of a kindergartner who receives special education services at McCollum Elementary, the parent of a three-year-old that participates in the partnership that Wichita Public Schools has with our YMCA and the Child Care Development Centers. Alongside, we are all also stakeholders vested not just financially but morally in the future of our education system. And I bring that to the table that I know that you share with me. Our most pressing concern at United Teachers of Wichita lies in addressing student behavior. It is imperative that our collaboration and our work together is informed and driven by objective data. Our due diligence this year reveals that there is room for improvement in assessing critical information. It is high time we transcend historical barriers and commit together to a shared ideal of transparency and accountability in our data. To construct bridges for behavior that withstand the test of time, we must lay the foundation with empirical evidence. This requires an unflinching willingness from this School Board to collaborate and deliberate on the data surrounding student behavior in our schools. Let's collectively work together to design the blueprints for policies that reconcile the requirements of our diverse student population. In our relentless pursuit of excellence, United Teachers of Wichita has delved into research with state and national partners. In addition, we have consulted a confluence of legal experts, academics, and the Department of Justice. This rich reservoir of knowledge has armed us with proven strategies and policy alterations that hold the potential to transform our education system through collaboration with our partnership with you. In our endeavors, we cannot afford to approach things with a myopic view. At the end of the school year, United Teachers of Wichita proactively submitted a Kansas Open Records Act request to the Board of Education on May 10. The request encompasses the following five areas. One, data outlining the total number of disciplinary referrals segregated by ethnicity and grade level, fifth through 12th grades. Two, analysis of the proportion of disciplinary referrals concerning Black, Hispanic, and white students in our district. Three, the ethnic composition of these students within the total student populace. Four, a comparative study on the total number of suspension days across years. And five, classification of offenses leading to disciplinary referrals and suspensions based on any established disciplinary matrix that exists. Unfortunately, I must report that our pursuit has been met with an impediment. We've been informed again today, for I believe the third time, that the district has not yet possessed the data we have requested in a process and valid form. While we appreciate and respect the intricacies and time involved with data collection, it is quintessential that such information is readily available and accessible, not just for us, but for district leadership to inform decisions that create safe classrooms for our students and our community. Another pillar crucial to building robust bridges is the faculty and educators. We cannot under any circumstance compromise the quality and dedication of our educators. Attrition is natural, but the void should be promptly and judiciously filled with individuals who embody the excellence we strive to imbue in our students. In alignment with our commitment to objective evidence, United Teachers of Wichita, in collaboration with Wichita State University's Elliott School of Communications, created a workload survey. The survey exemplifies the meaningful need to utilize and collect data that is both reliable and valid. The scientific rigor employed in this endeavor is of the highest caliber with a 98% reliable and validity rate. Such sterling data is indispensable in forming the bedrock of our future strategies together. We can analyze this data for both a holistic view of the city, as well as a focused study on the individual districts that each of you represent. As guardians of educational integrity, it is incumbent upon us to meticulously scrutinize this data. To that effect, United Teachers of Wichita extends an earnest invitation to each member of this Board of Education and the leadership team for individual meetings. Our objective is to facilitate profound discourse, not only encompassing the data of our beloved city, but also on the invaluable insights specific to your respective districts. This, we believe, is an instrumental step in coalescing our strengths and fortifying these bridges that we seek to build for a united tomorrow. Katie sends her kind regards from Topeka, where she's training with education leaders from across Kansas. She also asked that when we meet, we can discuss, to discuss the workload survey, if we could also work to create the meaningful policies possessed in other school districts, which she has discussed before, which create an appeal policy and process for employees denied an ADA request. Thank you to the entire Board of Education for being the bridge for our students to receive the education in safe classrooms and schools in our district of choice in this region. Thanks.
Thank you. Next item.
Next item, Public Communications.
We do have one speaker, Jesse Broski. And as Jesse's coming down, we do allow three minutes for the speaker's comments. And it'll be limited to the registered topic and will not include personnel matters concerning district employees and/or matters that would violate the privacy of students. Thank you for coming tonight.
Thank you. Hello, President Logan, Superintendent Bielefeld, and the rest of the members of the board. I appreciate having the chance to speak again today. I'm addressing you all today due to some concerns that were raised to me by some individuals in the community. On June 3, I attended the Kansas Multilingualism Summit at the Evergreen Community Center and Library. I had the great experience of meeting many parents and teachers in our district that are concerned about difficulties faced by students and parents who are English language learners. I have accumulated a list of these difficulties, and I would like to ask the board to do your best to resolve some of these issues. First, several parents and teachers noted that some teachers do not allow students to speak Spanish in their class, and that students have even received disciplinary actions for speaking Spanish. From what I understand, this should be against the USD 259 policy. And if this is the case, greater enforcement of this policy is necessary. Students should not be punished for speaking the language spoken in their homes. Another concern raised was that some students miss out on elective courses offered due to their enrollment in ESOL classes. I recognize the importance of ESOL classes, as do the families of our students. However, it appears necessary to become more flexible to better help our Spanish-speaking students take the courses that speak to them. Many parents were also concerned about events held by the district. It was noted that there was only one Spanish-speaking parent night across the whole district, resulting in some parents not being able to enter. This year, there is only going to be two parent-teacher conference days, which puts extreme stress on our interpreters as their resources are spread thin. I also received inquiries about the freshman parent meeting and the resources of Spanish speakers being offered. I also received inquiries about the possibility of an additional dual-language school other than Horace Mann. There are requests for consideration of heritage language education, recognizing that Spanish is spoken differently across the world, and these subcultural differences are important for our teachers to recognize. A point was also raised that not all people who speak Spanish can read or write in Spanish and vice versa. And it was noted that it is not the same teaching a Spanish-language learner and a Spanish heritage student. One of the most important things said to me that day was that Spanish speakers do not want to feel like they are simply a box being checked, but rather that they are people being respected. I know our board is concerned about the well-being of our Spanish-speaking families, so I just wanted to raise these concerns to you all. Thank you for your time. And one thing I wanted to add, I printed this out, but on the opposite side, there's also, it's been interpreted in Spanish. Thank you all for your time.
Thank you very much. Next item.
Next item, under Education, Kansas Education Systems Accreditation.
Welcome, Gil. We haven't seen you in a while. It's good to have you back.
Glad to be here.
Yeah.
Well, good evening, Superintendent Bielefeld. And I have to say, I didn't mess that up, not because I don't know how to say your name, but because the first time I presented, there was a transition with superintendents. I messed up Dr. Thompson's name and I said the previous superintendent. So I'm just glad I didn't mess that up. So glad to be here. President Logan, Vice President Albert, members of the board. I am Gil Alvarez, the proud Deputy Superintendent of the Premier School District in the state of Kansas. And I'll be presenting on our KISA accreditation process that we complete each and every year. Our most recent process was completed on April 28 of this past school year. Kansas implemented a systems approach to accreditation, beginning with the 2017, 2018 school year. This accreditation process, called KISA, gave school systems the leverage to purposefully implement systemic improvement by identifying the underlying causes of academic and non-academic challenges. Ultimately, the goal is to create a sustainable culture of improvement as evidenced by process and results. So tonight, I'd like to get you familiar with the process and share some results with you as we presented to our OVT team, which I'll explain as I go through this process. But before I get into that, on the left side of the screen, you see the paper there of our district KISA team. I just wanted to give a shout out to all of our district leaders that helped create not only the reports, because they did some writing, but they also presented, those that helped create, set up the room for us to present in. There were just so many people that made this a great opportunity and a great accomplishment. So I just wanted to give a shout out to all those listed. But there's also members in those departments that are not listed, but also did a phenomenal job helping us with this process, which is important because it's going to tie into our district accreditation. Our strategic plan aligns with the KISA process, but before we get into this al... Our strategic plan aligns with the KISA process, but before we get into this alignment and what we accomplished as a district, I'd like to give you an overview on the KISA process. So I've organized this presentation into two parts. And the first part is the KISA process, which is actually the components that you see on the screen, and then I'm going to move to kind of our WPS story, so what we had to do when we presented to the OVT team. The KISA process is divided into five KISA components to better understand the big picture. So if you look on the screen, you can see that those KISA components that comprise the overview is the process itself, the OVT, a lot of acronyms, it's called the Outside Visitation Team, the KISA reporting, writing the annual OVT report, and then finally, the Accreditation Review Council, also known as the ARC. So you're going to hear me say OVT, you're going to hear me say ARC, and that's what those stand for. So, we're going to take you through first, the KISA process. So what is KISA? Let's start by learning what KISA stands for, which is the Kansas Education Systems Accreditation. And I wanted to also define on the screen, you can see there what accreditation, what the definition of accreditation, it means the system is a good standing, the system is in good standing, with the state board and districts have provided conclusive evidence of growth in student performance. So that's eventually what we're shooting for. Now, we are a district, we are accredited, fully accredited, through our cycle one. So each cycle is a five-year process. So this year, we are in cycle two, because we already been fully accredited, but we just finished year three of a five-year cycle. So, and I'll continue to say those as well as we go through. The bedrock of the KISA model is a quality continuous improvement process grounded in evidence-based practices. In KISA, third-party accountability is provided through the OVT, and that's the Outside Visitation Team, and there's a, the next slide, we'll talk a little bit more about the OVT. The KISA cycle of improvement is based on the premise that district and building leadership are knowledgeable about and prepared to facilitate and lead a continuous improvement process. So if you look to the right of the PowerPoint or the slide where it says growth cycle in the middle, there's a lot of different improvement cycles or growth cycles. There's the Plan Do/Study/Act, we use that within our district as well, but this KISA one is very similar to that, and it starts with Phase One, which is at the top, kind of the dark blue. It's collect and examine data. So this is a, this is when the needs assessment process occurs and data analysis. A needs assessment starts with a vision and end goal in mind, and it attempts to align the needs based on data and stakeholder perception. So it is specifically starting to collect and examine the data that shows where our need is at. So that's Phase One. Phase Two, we're going clockwise, Phase Two is to determine goals. This is where your action planning occurs, we're setting goals and selecting strategies. The system uses the needs assessment information gathered in Phase One to define and prioritize needs and goals. Phase Three, this is where we begin implementation, where we put our strategies together, interventions into practice. This phase on the continuous improvement model is about implementing the approved improvement plan, the approved improvement plan. Phase Four is when we examine data, analyze the results to see if things are working, see if there's things that we possibly need to tweak to the plan, and then Five is evaluate results. In this phase, we reflect on the data to determine specifically what has improved, what do we need to maintain, what do we need to stop doing or decline so appropriate actions can be taken. So we, following this improvement cycle is really, in a nutshell, what the KISA process is about. So now moving on to the Outside Visitation Team. It stands, you'll hear me say OVT, but it's Outside Visitation Team. Educators serving on the Outside Visitation Team provide a crucial service to enhance the quality of education delivered to our students by supporting WPS and our continuous improvement efforts. OVT members and chairs are professionals responsible for mentoring, coaching, and supporting their colleagues in the accreditation process. The OVT will ultimately write a report in Year Five that the Accreditation Review Council, also known as the ARC, will access to help, will access to help them determine an accreditation status recommendation to the State Board of Education at the end of the accreditation cycle of Year Five. So we are so grateful to have an amazing Outside Visitation Team that provide coaching and support for our district. Our OVT is comprised of superintendents, assistant superintendents, executive directors, principals, and the Kansas Learning Network from districts across the state, which include Topeka Public Schools, Kansas City, KCK, or the Kansas City-Kansas Public Schools, Newton, and Andover are where our, these OVT members come from. Next is the reporting, and the reporting is, this is what we have to do to prepare for our presentation to the OVT, and that's what happened on April 28th. So, as we prepare, it took us, it took us year long, we started actually in September, early September, meeting with a planning team to talk about, okay, what are the things that we need to talk about, pick a date, and make sure that we are communicating with our OVT members on that specific date, and then what we're going to actually present. So I want, on the left side of your screen, the Kansas Education Systems Accreditation, or KISA, is the state board's adopted accreditation five-year model. And we are currently in Cycle Two, Year Three, next year will be Year Four, and then a year after that is Year Five, and that's actually the accreditation year. There are few non-negotiables for all systems seeking accreditation status from the state board. In our yearly reports, we are expected to account for the following items. So on the right side, you're going to see all those check marks, and there's quite a few check marks, but even within those particular topics, there's even more, and I'm going to, I'll share that with you to give you some example. So the first one is compliance areas. We have to be in compliance, that's one of the things they look at to make sure that we are doing some, either providing some of the plans that we're supposed to as a district. So some of those include ACT and Work Keys Participation, Anti-Bullying Policy and Plan, Assessments, Child Abuse and Neglect Mandated Reporter Training, Child Nutrition Services and Wellness, Dyslexia Training, Early Childhood Educator Mentoring and Induction Plan, Individual Plan of Study, the Jason Flack Act, Kids Reporting, Licenseure, Professional Development Plan, Special Education, the IDEA, and Title Services. So you can see just in that one compliance area how well we do, because we have zero compliance issues within our, when we did our particular OVT visit. So that's a good thing, that just tells you that our system is running and aligning with ourselves, so I have to give a shout out to all our district leaders in those departments that do the necessary things year after year to make sure that we're in compliance. The next one is foundational structures, and this includes tiered system of supports, family business and community partnerships, diversity, equity, and access, communication and basic skills, civic and social engagement, physical and mental health, arts and cultural appreciation, we just heard fine arts today, so we have a lot to say about our fine arts programs too, and not just the instrumental or the vocal, but also our, the arts, that we have, the visual arts as well. We have post-secondary and career preparation, all those are attached to foundational. Now, the good thing is, we did not have to present on every single one of those yet because we were in Year Three. When we get to Year Five, we are going to have to make sure that we write a report that really hit on each one of these areas, but we wanted to make sure that we did add some in these areas because we didn't want to wait till Year Five and then have to do a very comprehensive outlook. We're just adding more and more each year to make it a little bit easier. State Board outcomes, which include social-emotional growth, kindergarten readiness, high school graduation, individual plan of study, and post-secondary success. We even have to address the definition of a successful high school graduate, which is, it has the, the student has an academic preparation, cognitive preparation, technical skills, employability skills, and civic engagement to be successful in post-secondary education in the attainment of an industry-recognized certification or the workforce without the need of remediation. So that are lists. We also have stakeholder involvement and engagement, we have assurances, and then in the end, we put all this into an authenticated application to make sure that these system reports serve as evidence of work completed and progress made. So that's a big list on some of the, and that's why, when I gave a shout out at the beginning to our leaders who are helping write this, because each section is written by a person in those particular departments to help us get the information that we need to put in this final report, and then we can present it as well. The next component is writing the annual OVT report, and this one doesn't really have to do with us, so I don't want to get this one confused with those system updates that I just shared with you, that's us presenting to the OVT, the OVT team. This writing the annual OVT report is from the actual Outside Visitation Team. They, once they read the report, once they see and take notes on our presentation, they have to, in 30 days, give us a report back on evidences that they saw, give us feedback on maybe areas that we can improve, so it's a great support system that we have there. So the purpose of the OVT Annual Summary Report is twofold. First, the report is designed to give feedback to the system on its progress in terms of the KISA continuous improvement process. And second, the report serves as documentation for the ARC as it reviews each system and makes a recommendation to the State Board of Education on its accreditation status. Once again, we're not there yet, that would be Year Five. The report should contain an explanation of the process that the system has undertaken as documented by the evidence or data that they have collected during the decision-making and implementation process. The OVT Annual Report should provide all of the evidence that the ARC needs to make an accreditation recommendation determination when it is time. So the last section, or the last component, is the Accreditation Review Council, also known as the ARC. What is their responsibility? Educators serving on the ARC assume the role of system data reviewers for the purpose of making an accreditation status recommendation to the State Board of Education. The Accreditation Review Council, also known as the ARC, will have real-time access to system data via the KSDE authenticated applications where we have to put all our information in. The data reviewed will include the system yearly updates and the OVT Annual Summary submitted each year. Data will include state board outcome results and student performance results. Following the OVT final spring visits each year, the ARC conducts reviews on each system seeking accreditation status. All systems granted a status of accredited will receive a congratulatory letter and a certificate of accreditation. So on the right side of your screen of this particular slide, you can see the different levels of accreditation. Obviously, everybody's shooting for the top one, everybody wants to be fully accredited, but there's also the conditionally accredited, and the difference there, it says means the system is in good standing with the state board, and either the system did not provide conclusive evidence of growth in student performance, or was not able to provide conclusive evidence of an intentional quality growth process. And of course, the last one is not accredited, and you can see the two components where a district or, when they say system, they're talking about the school system, the district in particular, would be not accredited. I'm going to pause there because that ends the part of what I call the KISA process. I'm going to move in now to some of our results and some of our information that we shared, but is there any questions in regards to the process itself?
Ernestine?
Do I understand that this is for all schools in Kansas, all public schools in Kansas? Who is under this?
It's all schools, all districts, because it's a, this accreditation process is for the districts.
For all public schools?
For all public schools in Kansas. I think there are some, there's also some private schools that are also being accredited, because...
That they can choose to do that, but they're not required, but all the public schools are required to do this?
Well, required for an accreditation process, but there are other agencies that you can, you can opt out of this and go to another agency, it's going to cost you money. So it's, but yes, there is accreditation process that we follow from our state.
But it's basically required to, every public school in Kansas is required to do this?
That is correct. And it's interesting that you say that, because when they started, this year and next year, they had a big bulk of their districts that were tied into the last year of accreditation. So they're looking at ways to even out. Year One should be around 70 districts, Year Two should be around 70 districts, so they're having to reshuffle to make sure that they have enough capacity to look at all these reviews that they need to do, especially with the ARC.
Hazel?
You mentioned that we're in Year Three of Five. When you're accredited, I'm not, I don't know if I understand, is, at Year Five, do you start over again, or how long does accreditation last?
Yeah, once you get accredited, it'll last you five years, so...
So then you go five years and then you start the process over again?
You start the process over, and that would be Cycle Three, since we finished Cycle Two. So we're in Cycle Two right now. So once we're done, and we get accredited after Year Five, we start over with Year One, going through that, looking at our data, do we need to...
So you don't wait five, you don't get accredited and then wait five years and get accredited again? You get, it goes back to back?
Yeah, you're accredited four, five years.
Okay.
Until you hit that five-year mark again. So once you're accredited, you keep that status for five years.
Okay, gotcha.
You basically don't just wait five years to start working on it again.
Correct. You start, you start that, that cycle of improvement again, that growth cycle.
Because the team comes in yearly to look at what we're doing.
That is correct. The Outside Visitation Team comes in every year, it's just there's requirements for Year One versus Year Five, there's a lot more requirements obviously for Year Five because you're getting accredited. Year One, you kind of scaffold your approach every year to share what good things are happening, what your accomplishments are. Really, in Year One, you're looking at what your goals, do you need to change your goals to, so depending on what you're seeing in your data.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I have a question about sustainability as far as this particular program, because I know in years past, the Board of, State Board of Education has modified their accreditation process mid-cycle in many cases. Is there any discussion of modifying this cycle piece?
Yes, that's a great question, and yes, they are. Look, next year, if they haven't done so already, I didn't look to see when they meet with the State Board of Education, but there is a proposal sent to them either in June, I think, when they meet, to, it's actually a system to align the work, instead of making it so cumbersome for districts, they're looking at streamlining it to do more of a scaffolding approach for Year One, Two, Three, Four, and Five. And they're also having to make sure that each year, there's a decent amount of districts that are actually going for their accreditation year, so it's not all in, either this year or next year. I said that earlier, but that's one of the reasons why they're taking that to the State Board of Education to change the process. We're just waiting to hear if that's approved. If it is, it's not going to change what we do, our Year Five is still going to be, not next year, but the year after, that's not going to change. We still will be in that group of districts to go for our accreditation year. But Year Four will look a little different, because there may be some more training, and we may not have to do the OVT visit officially, because it may be a training year, but we're waiting to hear what the State Board of Education, if it approves that proposal.
But as far as our accreditation, it's still going to be two years out?
Correct, that is correct.
It's my understanding that they're trying to get a fifth of the districts every year that move into accreditation.
That's correct.
Will that adjust?
That won't change for us. We know, they've already said, there's a group in our year that's going to stay, even though next year may look a little different, we're still going to be in the group that's on that fifth year.
Okay, thank you.
So we're not changing that, yeah.
Thank you. I'm not seeing any other questions, so please continue.
All right. So let's talk about our WPS story and kind of what we did as we presented on April 28th. And as I said before, Cycle Two, Year Three is where we are. These were the topics, this was almost like a table of contents for our PowerPoint, you can see the list there of the things that we actually went over. So some of these were foundational structure areas, which would have included the diversity, equity, and access, the physical and mental health. We also had our, the board outcomes, which would have included graduation rate, what kindergarten readiness are part of that, so out of that checklist that I shared before. And then, of course, our third-grade reading proficiency, and you're going to see here on the right side, are our two KISA goals, and I want you to, as you look at those, they look familiar, because we want to align the KISA goals to our strategic plan. So, goal number one, increase high school graduation rate from 74 to 80%, and we say by 2025, because that's where we extended our strategic plan. And then, and then the second one was increase third-grade reading proficiency scores on the state reading assessment from 21.93 to 44% by 2025. And I put a little component underneath there, because we also had shared at a previous, we shared with you as the board, we want to decrease the percentage of students in Level One by 1 to 5% annually, because there's, we've got to understand what progress and growth versus achievement. So our achievement was threes and fours, but our progress was trying to get our students out of that Level One, because we really believe that Level One is, we need our students out of there to get into twos, threes, and fours. And I'm going to share some data here in just a minute with that. And I'm going to share some data here in just a minute with that. So this, this next slide is really just tying into our strategic plan alignment. Our goal number one and goal number two is directly tied to our KISA goals as well. But we also, our strategic plan, not only is it perfectly aligned to the State Board outcomes, which are social emotional growth. That's tied into goal number four, schools trusted as safe places. The other State Board outcome is kindergarten readiness. That's tied into our increased third grade reading proficiency. The high school graduation, obviously, is goal number one, increase graduation rate. An individual plan of study is, and it's in our indicators for success for goal number three on our strategic plan, talking about increase the number of students competency on having an individual plan of study to prepare for post-secondary success. And then post-secondary success also ties into our goal number three. But you can also make an argument for goal number one, because they have to graduate in order to have post-secondary success as well. So our strategic plan is aligned with the State Board outcomes as well. So let's look at the first goal of increasing third grade reading proficiency. So needs assessment means we review and analyze data to identify the areas of need. We noticed that even prior to the pandemic, our students were not meeting the proficiency levels on K-five screeners necessary to support comprehension, which is the bedrock of complex skills needed for successful outcomes on our state assessment. So on the left side of the slide, you can see where our elementary office made specific goals to increase the number of students proficient on FastBridge K-five screeners. So instead of us just waiting till the very end for state assessments, these FastBridge screeners can be monitored throughout the year, this formative assessment, these screeners. And there was a very rigorous goal that we have set for ninety percent, as you can see. So kindergarten, for example, word segmenting, we wanted to go from fifty percent to ninety percent. First grade nonsense word fluency, forty-two to ninety. And then our CBMRs for second through fifth grade want to get to ninety percent as well. So there were some non-negotiables, some lead measures that we wanted to make sure that were occurring in order to reach that. That was the implementation of daily word recognition routines. We also had students who did not meet proficiency will be progress monitored at least bi-weekly. So that was a goal of ours as well, to make sure we can monitor them and then participate in the letters professional learning. So that side of the slide was really tied into our formative assessment. What we, we kind of tied that into almost our lead measures to where we made sure that we were monitoring those data points. And I'm going to share on the next slide some of those data. But on the right side of the slide is specifically tied into our third grade reading proficiency goal, and then some of those areas that I already shared for those non-negotiables. But we also wanted to refocus on our multi-tiered system of support to make sure kids are getting the appropriate support needed to be successful, to close those gaps, if you will. So here's some data for you for third grade reading proficiency. And I know Susan had shared winter to winter data with you at one of the budget presentations, but I just wanted to kind of go through there. So the tables on the left represent winter to winter comparison across three years. While our wildly important goals do not include the LSF, which is the letter sound fluency, or the LNF, letter name fluency, for kindergarten, or the word segmenting, which is the WS for first grade, we continue to keep an eye on these numbers. As we know, they are critical components of early reading foundational skills that lead to later reading success. So if you look at the left side of the winter to winter, if you just look down the column of increase, you're going to see, when you compare ourselves from 2021 to 22, 23, even the ones that are not as one of our goals, but we're monitoring, which is, if you look at kindergarten, LNF, letter name fluency, we had a twenty-six percent increase, percentage point increase of our kindergarten students. The letter sound fluency, we had a twenty-eight percentage point increase. But if you compare from 2021, which is during that pandemic at eighteen percent, we jumped up to forty-six percent. Are we where we want to be with achievement, meaning we need to increase that number? We're not where we want to be, because we're trying to hit that ninety percent mark is where we want to be. But the significant growth and progress that we're making is going to show in the future the success in third grade or the success to make sure our kids can read by the end of first grade. But if you look at the first grade and even second through fifth grade, there's increases, every single grade level has increased in those FastBridge assessments that we're trying to monitor. We still going to, we still want them to try to shoot for ninety percent. That's still our goal, but we, we can see the progress that we're making. On the right side, however, that was winter to winter. So we want to, the blue table is spring to spring data. So if you look spring to spring, this is end of, end of the year in particular. So even for our kindergartners from the letter name fluency, in spring of twenty-one was thirty-nine point six, but they've increased in spring of twenty-three to sixty-three point seven, which is a twenty-four point one percent percentage point increase. You see the same for the learning sound fluency, had an increase of twenty-nine point four percentage points. And then even word segmenting for kindergartners from spring of twenty-one to twenty-three was a fifteen point six percentage point increase. So there's, there's a lot of great things happening. And I just want you to join me in this, in being excited about where we're seeing the movement coming from. And then the last one is a state assessment, that's the yellow table. The first one is level one. And I shared before that the goal is to decrease the percentage of students in level one by one percent to five percent annually. So the first one on level one, you see the minus sign, minus two point three percent, because we actually decreased the amount of students in level one by two point three percentage points, which is exciting, once again, because that's, that's, we met our goal, and we want to continue to do that. Level two, now, these are the ones that you want to see increases. And we did increase the number of students in level two by one point three percentage, percentage points. Level three by point three percentage points. And then level four, an increase of point seven percentage points. All our data, and I will say the trend, that same trend is happening in elementary as a whole, middle school as a whole, and high school as a whole, for the most part. That trend is very similar in all math and ELA, which is extremely exciting. Despite all the challenges that we've had, our, our schools, our teachers, our support staff, everybody is, is buckling down and saying, hey, we can really make a difference and change the trajectory of our students by doing the things that we do. So having these, these experiences, I think, is going to really help us continue to move forward. Just a quick story. In 2017, and this, this is what excites me even more, because in 2017, our graduation rate was seventy-three point nine percent. When we started putting things in place, but the next year, it only grew point one percent. We're at, our increases are even bigger than that. But at point one percent, we only got to seventy-four percent. And I was interviewed by some news agency, and they, the question was, how do you feel about your graduation rate being flat? What are your thoughts? And I said, well, you may say they're flat, but I said that they grew point one percent. And it was important, because when you're on a downslide and the pandemic was putting us on a bad trajectory, when you have to change that trajectory, there has to come a point where you're seeing your data turn, no matter how slow or how small, because of the things that you're putting into place. And I'm, and I'm really excited, because I feel like we're there now, like we were back then with graduation rate, when somebody felt, oh, you're just flat data. And we're saying, no, this is turning the ship around, because we stopped that downward trend that we were making. So I'm excited about to see what we're going to do in the future, because I do feel like this, that's where we are now. And then you're going to see here in a minute, when we talk about graduation rate, you know where we are with graduation rate and how well we've done with that. So we can see this hopefully being that momentum changer as we go through. So it's extremely exciting.
We do have a question. Kathy?
Thank you. Over on the previous page, when you were talking about the strategic plan alignment, you're talking about the strategic plan as it is now. Now, we're going to have a new one at the end of the year. Is this all going to have to change to become in alignment with the new plan?
I think what we find out, because that, that's, that's going to take us to a point of that improvement cycle. So I think whatever we come up with, we can make it, determine what our new goals could possibly be. So we'll finish it out, you know, for our year five cycle. But I don't think it's going to impact what we're doing in KISA, because we're always going to try to make that connection, because we want to make sure that our KISA goals are connected to our strategic plan.
So we will finish this cycle out with the plan the way that it is at this point and continue that even though there's a new plan coming in?
Yes, unless, unless we see through this process that a change needs to be made, because we can change our goals. It's a, it's a working document. So if we need to change because of the data that we see or the information that we get from stakeholders, we can definitely look into that as well.
Okay, thanks.
I'm not sure there'll be any much, you know, as much different, because no matter what, all strategic plans want an academic success component, whether it's third grade, whether it's graduation rate, closing the achievement gap, whatever that is, as well as, you know, safety in schools. We definitely want that as well. So we'll see how that turns out, but I don't think it's going to be an issue.
Thank you. You may continue.
All right.
No more questions.
So moving from, because in this presentation was strictly on those two goals. So the second one was graduation. And we've seen where our graduation has, has gone already. But increase high school graduation rate, we were trying to go from seventy-four to eighty percent by 2025. And we're on the slide at the very bottom where it says overall, we're at eighty point four percent, which is an increase of six point four percentage point increase. But just wanted to share some of that, and that's exciting, because we already hit it. And the secondary office has already put in a new goal, because we don't want to just stay complacent. We don't want to stay at eighty percent. So we're, we're going to push up a little bit, so we can continue to move, move forward. And I'll share, share that with you as well. The formula, though, on the screen, you see that tier one planning, and it's hard to kind of read, but it's tier one planning, instruction, and assessment. So as we improve the quality instruction, make sure we're, we're planning with the standard-based planning in mind, that we're teaching to the cognitive level, the standards, that plus our at-risk student supports that we put into place, plus the credit recovery that our schools have, plus focus goals and lead measures that our buildings do as part of their school improvement plans. That equals the graduation rate and really graduation rate increase. Now, the future, we want to make sure that we're doing more with our graduation plus initiative, the market value assets, because we believe that students can get hooked. We believe that students can see value, once they get into one of those market value assets, they may say, that's what I want to do. They have a plan after that. So, so our future plan is to add those market value assets tied into that, so students can get engaged in what they want to do post-secondary. You have a handout with you, and it's, it's the graduation rate handout. So and on there, we see that we have a six point four percentage point increase. These are the highlights from 2018 to 2022. You have the specific subgroups of improvement showing, but I just wanted to share some of the highlights that show from your document. Twenty out of the twenty-five subgroups increased. And I'm including males, females as a group. I'm also doing males and females on different demographic groups, Hispanic, African-American. So there, all those are what I consider a separate subgroup. So twenty of the twenty-five subgroups increased. Males have increased seven point three percent. Females have increased five point eight percent. We will say in graduation, our females have shown great growth with our graduation rate. Our males are heading there, but we want to make sure that they get to the same level of, as our females are as well. So we want to continue to encourage and motivate our, our males to, to do well, so they can continue to graduate. And maybe that is part of our graduation plus plan. Our ELL or ESOL students are, have an increase of thirteen point four percentage points. In graduation, our homeless, twenty point four percentage points. And then students with disabilities increased every year since 2018. The males at fourteen point five percentage points, and females at eight point eight percentage points. So we're looking at all of those subgroups to make sure that they are moving now. We do have five, however, that, that went down. So we have to monitor those subgroups too, to say, okay, what are we doing to help make sure that they get to the same level of achievement in graduation rate as others as well? So you see the structures are listed there, some of the structures in place that are, we feel that increased graduation rate, anywhere from the disclaimer process all the way to our special education within reach, our individual plan of study, obviously, our extended learning opportunities in summer schools, all those kind of things help create this success. So then you can see our goal for 23, 24, moving graduation rate from eighty point four percent. We want to get to eighty-two percent by 2024. So we're hoping that this year, we had, we show a increase, so we, hopefully, cross our fingers, eighty-one percent. So it's easy, so as we're moving up, that we can get to that eighty-two percent by 2024. So I want to end on a quote, "Never discourage anyone who continually makes progress, no matter how slow." We're in an instant gratification. We want the answers now. But there is a difference between achievement and progress. And we, we are continuing, as you can see from the data, continuing to make progress in this district to where we want to go. So we just need to continue that and continue to motivate, all of us need to motivate each other, so we don't get discouraged, because sometimes we want to see bigger growth. But any growth is the right growth that we need. So I just wanted to end there and then ask if there's any questions.
Yes. It's not so much a question, as I want to thank you for emphasizing that last point. Too often, we see things as, as just, it's, it, yes or no. Did they hit the mark or not? Oh, well, all of these down here, that's failure. But I am so excited about the idea that we are seeing any kind of progress, because we get students that come from, we have no idea what's been going on in their lives. And with our forty-seven, forty-eight thousand students, there is obviously so much, that if they are here and they improve, not only do we need to congratulate ourselves, we need to congratulate our teachers, but I also want to have, and I know teachers are doing this, I want to have a way that they could congratulate the kids for, you grew, you moved. Because so often, the kids, it's like, well, I, I failed. I, I didn't make this particular point. But the fact that they moved, thank you for bringing that point. That is so important. Thank you.
Just from what you said, I went back to the slide with, here are some student pictures that we do have teachers that are celebrating a student's success and improvement. That one says, I just read thirty-eight words, I believe it says. And it says from seventeen, when they started. So the celebration is, is happening. Our, our teachers are amazing, amazing leaders, amazing educators that do wonderful things for our students. So I have to give kudos to the work that's being done, especially even through challenges that we definitely have. And when you talk about continuous improvement, we're educational institutions. We should be about improvement. It's not just about automatically achievement. We, I mean, if that was the case, and we wouldn't be, we don't celebrate in a track in the Olympics, the eighth-place runner comes in, and you don't even know who it is, because we don't, we don't believe, even though that eighth grade, or the eighth grade, that eighth lane or that eighth-place runner probably had a personal best, but they didn't win first place, second place, or third place, the gold, the silver. And, and we don't even think about that celebration of saying that was a personal best for those athletes in that particular area. So as educational institutions, we really need to concentrate on continuing to, to move and think about progress and growth as well as we go through.
Diane?
I appreciate the conversation around progress. On slide eleven, where we've got a lot of the proficiency numbers and improvement slide, could you explain to everybody the difference between state assessments and FastBridge?
Yes. State assessments are, are end of the year, what I would consider a summative assessment. So you work and work and work till the very end, and the state has state assessments in reading, science, math, there's social studies. And in our case, with reading and math, they take it at the very end to show, okay, what, how, how are our programs doing across our district throughout the year when the student gets a score? Versus the FastBridge, which is the other part of the data, these are screeners that we can progress monitor throughout. So we know if a child is not making growth, we can say, okay, what do we need to change in our practice? Or what do we, maybe they need an intervention to close that gap? So they're looking, and when I shared before on third grade reading, they talked about progress monitoring bi-weekly. If a student was not showing proficiency in a FastBridge assessment for that particular skill that they're measuring. So it's more of a formative assessment, these FastBridge screeners, they can continue to, to look, because we give them, most of them are three times per school year, one in the fall, one in the winter, and then one in the spring. But in between those is where they progress monitor. State assessments, we don't do that. State assessment is very end, you're taking it, and that's, and then you get your score. One score, and, and that's it.
And so can you expand on what we do with the progress monitoring information and how we identify those students?
When they get a score, the, the scores that they receive, they will determine if they need intervention. And so if, and it could be a class-wide intervention in their core. It could be a walk to intervention, meaning they need a tier two. So they're going to a teacher to, to fill a gap or a need. And that could be. So they're going to a teacher to, to fill a gap or a need, and that could be, um, doing more for either word segmenting, or it could be fluency work that they need because they're trying to get better at comprehension. Um, so as, and as they progress monitor, they're hoping that whatever instruction they're getting at that moment in time, they're showing progress towards, uh, higher scores and not declining, because they're saying, okay, whatever we're giving them right now, whatever instruction is happening, whether that's in the class-wide strategy, or if that's in an intervention, if it's improving, they want to keep doing it. If it's going down, they have to think, okay, well, maybe they need more intensive work. Maybe it's, maybe it's more around decoding, they, because we thought that they were past that, but maybe they need more decoding help, so they can put them in an intervention to work on the decoding skills to get them back up to grade level if, if they need it. And they're, and they're monitoring that through progress monitoring to see if the student needs more intensive work or not.
But we have very-
Or intensive support, I should say.
There's very intentional ways to identify, uh, students who are slower learners, who need additional support, and being able to get that support to those students and to those families.
Correct. There, there's, there's specific, I call them cut scores, there are scores that will tell us that this student needs a little bit more. So we need to look at where those skill deficits are so we can help fill that gap.
Okay. Very good. Thank you, Gil.
Okay. Uh, I know we've finished the twenty-three school year now, and we have one more graduation, which is our summer school graduation coming up here fairly quickly. When do we anticipate having twenty-two, twenty-three data on graduation rates?
Our graduation goes all the way to September thirtieth of the next year. So technically, students, that's why summer school's so important. Uh, there's also times where students can even come back next, in the fall, as long as it's before September thirtieth, and finish up maybe a class that they, that they needed, and maybe they didn't get quite done by the end of June. Going into July, they tried, they didn't get done, but they can come back and, and finish it up, as long as it's before September thirtieth, and it would, it would be part of that cohort of this year. So it's, it's going to be after October one, when we start looking in course. Then we have to clean up the data, because we have to go back and find students that, that maybe didn't graduate, but they moved, and we just coded it wrong. So there's, there's opportunities that the state provides us to clean up the data before it's official, uh, in November, December-ish.
So sometime in the late fall, we may, we will have it. Thank you.
Correct.
I was fortunate enough to be able to sit in on the KESHA, uh, team's visit, and I must tell you, I was very impressed with what you all presented, but how well our schools and our district looks. We're moving in the right direction, and I am so pleased that we're using our formative data, because it shows that we're moving in the right direction, even though that some of the state assessment may not reflect it yet. But if you get kids to start moving consistently on that formative data, the state assessments will follow.
Right. Absolutely.
It was a great day. I appreciate it, and thank you to you and your team for that.
Appreciate that.
Hazel?
So I, in this presentation, I realized that this is a lot of work, background work that you're doing. Once we're accredited, are we rated by, when we're accredited, are, is our district rated in any way?
No, just, they would just tell us that we are accredited institution, or district, I should say.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, Kelly?
So I, I wanted to share a couple of things, and Hazel, I appreciate your comment, because I was going to comment about that. Um, I was going to make a, a sports analogy, but I think I'll do a sewing analogy, since you're a seamstress. So, year one, uh, since I've been in Wichita, Gil and I have been, uh, working together on, on this, uh, so I've been here in year one. So year one, I would say was a, you know, we sewed two pieces of fabric together, it was probably a little crooked. Um, year two, we maybe made a pillowcase. Um, and then year three, you know, this was, this was a suit jacket. I mean, this was, uh, by far our best year, the hours that Gil spent on this with his team, um, the, the organization, the, you know, the OVT I felt like was very impressed this year, um, with, with not only our data, but with our presentation and, and all of that. So, um, my hat's off to him and his team and, and everything we did. It made us look good. Um, with that said, you know, Cheryl, Cheryl and I talked, and Gil and I talked about possibly doing the full presentation in like a board workshop format or something, because this to me is, is what we need to be talking about, right? This is, this is it. This is kids and progress, and really what we're here for. So, um, next year, because of the way the KESA process is changing, I don't know exactly what it'll look like, but, um, we would like, I guess, you all to be more involved or as involved in this, because this is really the bread and butter of what we do as a district. So, um, and then the last thing I'd, I want to say, kind of tying back to what Kathy said about the strategic plan, um, you, uh, early on, when Gil was going through the, the state requirements, there's thirty-one areas of compliance, there's eight foundational structures, there's five state board outcomes, there's five different, uh, examples of what a graduate needs. So the state doesn't help us to be focused, right? So our, our strategic plan is so important, because as, as we focused on third grade reading, and really these last three years, really leaned into it, you can see the tide turning and the data turning. So I think our challenge in the next strategic plan is going to continue to be, can we focus? And can we be committed to those things we're focused on for professional learning, for budget, for all of the things that we put towards it? Because we know it works. I mean, we saw with graduation rate, I believe we're seeing it with third grade reading. So, um, but, you know, the state and, and the federal government both like to add stuff to our plates, and so, um, it's, it's on us to, to protect our, our principals and our teachers, and make sure we, we keep the focus where it's supposed to be. So, um, anyway, but thank you again, Gil, for all your hard work. It was great.
I, I appreciate that, but I'll take it to the team, obviously. The, the team is doing a lot of the work, uh, behind the scenes. But, you know, one thing I, I, we don't think about sometimes is, even with our OVT, coming from different districts, we have now, some district leaders are coming from different districts, and they're, they, and they always say, I don't think you realize the things that you have in place and that you're doing that others do not. So to hear that, sometimes we just don't think about it, because we're just, we're constantly trying to be better and trying to be better, and we don't realize, we have a lot of systems in place that are phenomenal. But there's, and there may be some things we need to de-implement too. Obviously, you know, Esther has caused us to do a lot, so we're going to have to be thinking of that too. But I think we need to remind ourselves that we are doing some phenomenal work in the Wichita Public Schools, and we need to be celebrating those things as well, especially when we're hearing it from people from other districts.
Thank you for an excellent presentation, and I can't, can't-
I want to do a stand-up with this blog.
And you are right. When we go out, we find out we're about a foot and a half or two feet ahead of everybody else. Next item.
Next item, consent?
Ernestine, do you have anything to pull?
I have nothing.
Stan?
No consent items to pull.
I have nothing to pull this evening. Diane?
I do not have anything to pull.
Hazel?
I have nothing to pull.
Julie?
I'm gonna, I'm gonna be the rebel here, uh, and pull C four.
C four, okay. Kathy?
Let it be recorded, I have nothing.
Thank you very much. Okay, do I hear a motion to accept the rest of the consent?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Um, it was moved by Julie, and I heard, uh, Ernestine first, so seconded by Ernestine. Please cast your vote. Well, we'll just let you vote, hand raising. There you go. Uh, motion passes, seven zero. Thank you. C four, Julie?
Yes. Um, this item is a capital outlay item, uh, some improvements at Robinson, and it's a pretty big price tag, but it seems to me like, uh, there's a lot going on here, a lot of replacement of HVAC equipment, but also an addition, um, that deals with one of our large security concerns. So, uh, Kelly, do you, either you or Luke want to just explain to us, um, what's happening here with this addition?
Sure. Luke, do you want to come down and help? I want you to get the good version from Luke.
All right. Good evening. Um, so Robinson, as you said, we've got quite a bit of work going on over there. Um, we're putting in a secured front entrance, um, on the south side of the building. In addition to that, we have, uh, large-scale HVAC replacements occurring throughout the whole, the whole building, first and second and third floor. Um, and it's going to involve chillers, air handling replacements, um, controls replacements. Um, and then in addition to that, that, the current office space that they utilize, that's going to be converted to classrooms, because we need to have a space for, um, basically when we go through, because of the invasiveness of the HVAC work that we'll be doing, uh, we need to have some temporary spaces where they can have, have class, and they also need the additional space anyway. Um, so the current office space will be converted to classrooms, to where, as we go through the building and replace HVAC, they'll be able to use those classrooms, um, when they're displaced from their original classrooms, as we kind of move through the building. So, uh, that'll occur next spring. Uh, the plan is to start on the front entrance immediately this summer, have it done by next spring, and then we'll move them out of the office into the, the new secure front entrance office area, um, over spring break. And then at that point, we'll start on the classroom work, and then all the HVAC and everything after that.
So the addition will come south of the cafeteria, kind of into the parking lot.
Correct.
And then that space will be the new office, instead of having to enter the building and walk way down a long hall to get to the office space.
Right.
Okay. So my follow-up question is, that patterns what we really like as far as entrances to our buildings? I mean, I know we have safe entrances at every one of our buildings, uh, because at some locations, they push a buzzer and are let in, that's, that sort of concept. But what we really prefer is these, um, entrances, like what you're doing at Robinson, where you enter directly into the office and have to enter into that space before you can go into the building proper. And what my question is, is do you happen to know where we're at now, as far as, you know, we're doing one more, and this was one of the hard ones? I know we're kind of just down to the hard ones.
Yeah.
But do you know where we're at in that list of which one, how many are done, and how many more to do?
Sure. Yeah. Um, so we have eleven that the board has approved, uh, previously, earlier this year. Um, those first eleven will be starting this summer. Um, we're currently working on finishing design for the rest of the sites, and there are twenty-two additional sites, I believe. Um, the other two, obviously Robinson and then East High, we're also doing their secured entrance as part of the structural remediation work over there. Um, so it's the twenty-two, um, and I think we have that planned out till, might need Addie's help here, but I think it's twenty-four or twenty-five is when we're shooting to have all that done.
Wow. So we're making really good progress on that.
Yep, we're, we're cooking.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you very much. Uh, with that, I, oh, okay. Kathy has a follow-up question.
Kathy?
Yes. Um, to follow up with what she said, it's not a question, it is a comment of thank you, um, for doing this to Robinson at such an exponential rate. Uh, when I visited that school, I, I was just like, oh my gosh, this is such a vulnerable entrance. And please tell me Wilbur's next.
It's on the list. I know that. It's not part of those first eleven, but it's coming after that.
Okay, because they too are just as vulnerable, not as vulnerable as Robinson. I think Robinson was very critical.
Yeah.
So I, I want to thank you for your team.
Well, thank you. I appreciate it. Like, like Gil, I've got a great team as well. We've all got great teams.
Yeah, I have a happy note, um, a happy face on this. It wasn't a consent item to pull, it was just something that I was very glad to see.
All right.
Well, and I do approve that way, I mean, I do make a motion that we approve this. Um, I, I just wanted us to be informed relative to-
And I'll second it. Yeah.
Motion was made by Julie and seconded by Di, by Kathy, uh, that we approve C four. Please cast your votes. Oops, wrong machine. Okay, we'll let you vote with your finger, your hand again, if you, uh, as soon as he brings it up, we'll tell how, how many of us voted for it. Um, motion passes seven zero. Thank you very much. Patrick, we need our next item.
Next item, under operations, first review, board of education meetings calendar.
Okay. We are fast approaching the point in time when we put a new calendar in for our board meetings for next year. We will not vote on this until July, but that's coming soon. So are there any questions, concerns, problems with the calendar that we need to look at? Julie?
Um, I don't have any concerns. I'm in support of this calendar, but, um, the first board meeting of the year in July, I will have to attend remotely.
Okay. Thank you for letting us know that. I don't see any other questions or concerns, but please look over that, because we will be bringing it back to our next meeting. So, thank you very much. Next item?
Next item, under finance, budget report.
We couldn't end our meetings without seeing you, so thank you very much.
Well, good evening, President Logan, Superintendent-elect Beilefeld, Vice President Albert, members of the board. Um, we have hit another milestone in our budget development process. Um, we are going to talk tonight, as soon as we, thank you. Get rolling here. Yeah. Go ahead. There we go. Thank. Okay, we're moving. Okay, back on track now. Um, tonight, we're going to talk, um, about two topics primarily. Uh, we're going to visit the, um, updated revenue estimates that we are making for fiscal year twenty-four. We're going to give you a look at our fixed cost estimates that, uh, that we know to date, and then we're going to, uh, chat a little bit about the revenue neutral rate, which is, I know, one of your favorite topics. And we will, um, spend a little time tonight, um, refreshing, um, your memory on how that works, um, with a decision point to be coming later in June. Um, in fact, here is our budget development timeline. You can see, um, we were scheduled for a revenue neutral report tonight, and we're bringing that to you. Um, a revenue neutral decision, so an intent to whether we're going to exceed at the revenue neutral rate, we're going to ask the board for that decision on June twenty-ninth, and then we should be ready for a budget first look in July, and then hearings in August with adoption in September. So we are, we are on track. We'll first start with an updated revenue forecast. So what has changed on this slide since the last time I presented, presented it to you, which was, I believe, in April? Um, for the most part, the, the FTE information hasn't really changed. I did pull special ed out of the weighted FTE and put it as a line of its own. But the major change that occurred here was the actual state aid per pupil. It, we presented in April, it was estimated to be fifty-one oh three, and KSE, uh, updated that number to five thousand eighty-eight. So it did reduce just a little bit to a flat five percent increase from the current forty-eight forty-six. So based on that change and what we think's going to happen now with special ed, we are estimating about fourteen point six million dollars of what will, new general funding for the district to use for wages and other expenditures as, as we develop that fiscal year twenty-four budget. This, the special ed is, we are estimating about a million dollars in special ed, as far as new money. Not as much as we would have wanted. Um, we think of the seven point five million dollars more that might be coming to special ed, we'll get seven hundred and fifty thousand to a million of that. So you can see, even though base aid has gone up five percent, our estimate puts us at about three point seven percent increase. This is the fund also known as the local option budget. This fund primarily pays for utilities, transportation, technology, some of the operational costs. And we are estimating right now, if we go 33%, so that's the max we can do on the local option budget, that will raise about $5 million, which is about a 4% increase, which somewhat mirrors the what we would see in the general fund before special ed. That local option budget per pupil actually did go up too, same amount, went up 5%. But because of the student, the kind of our ongoing decline, we're not going to capture that full 5%. We're at 4% on the LOB, again, assuming we max at 33%. Which we'll need, it brings us to our next slide, which we'll need because our fixed cost increases are coming in, they're they're a little higher than than we would typically see, primarily in utilities and property casualty insurance. If you've been reading the board reports and following utility expenditures, you can see that you you have seen that we are paying close to $2.2 million more in utilities than we paid same time last year. Primarily rates are the are the culprit there. Not so much usage, although we've had some usage issues as well, but it's primarily the rates. And you've probably seen that in your home bills as well. Transportation, that's the 2.5% on the transportation contract. Property casualty, it should probably come in a little less than a million when we're all said and done, and that's a blessing, to be quite honest, because we're seeing rate rates across the country in the 20% to 30% on property casualty insurance because of storm damage on the coasts. And if we land in the 13% to 14% range, it will be, we're going to be sitting pretty good. So it's a lot of money, but it could have been much worse. And we're we're hearing from other districts that they are experiencing much worse than that, so we feel pretty good about that. Contract and just miscellaneous increases of about a half a million dollars. And then we are providing about a half a million dollars more in direct school support to help them curb inflationary pressures as well at the school level. So that puts us at about a $4 million fixed cost increase, which, again, most of this is paid out of the LOB, which is why we will most likely be recommending the 33% that we showed you on the slide previous. But there are some budget realities we just need to chat about as we kind of get into the revenue neutral conversation. The first is, you know, we're often asked, what does a 1% raise cost a district? And for those of you that have been on the board for a while, you can remember when we used to quote that at $3 million. Well, we've, it's a good thing, we've improved our wage structure over the last, you know, five, six years, and now a 1% raise costs us over $4 million. So if you are ever needing to pull that fact out of your back pocket, you can quote it at $4 million. The other budget reality, as we look to fiscal year '24, we gave you those revenue estimates based on this year's weightings, right? Because we haven't done all the forecasting yet. But we are hearing, there were several news reports out today even, that those families that had qualified for free and reduced meals because of their Medicaid status, that those families are dropping out of Medicaid qualification at pretty significant rates, partly because of some mailing issues with the state, so they're missing their deadlines, and just it's it's, again, more difficult to qualify as they come out of the COVID kind of safety net. So that very well could affect our at-risk numbers, which will then kind of pull back on some of the plans that we had of what we could use those additional at-risk dollars for next year. We're fine for this year, fine for, as we complete this year's budget, but as we plan for fiscal year '24, that's kind of an unknown of what that Medicaid direct cert process will look like and how many families will then qualify for free lunch driving at-risk dollars into the budget. So that was kind of disheartening news. We knew there was some risk, but already the the forms that they've reviewed, 70% have lost qualification in the first month. That's a big number. There is continued inflationary pressure, particularly in capital outlay. I think I had shared some of the custodial increases to you in in earlier meetings and presentations. You can see through some of the board agenda items, the high costs of some of those projects like Robinson. We will continue and have continued to see inflation be a real problem in that particular fund, and certainly in the local option budget as well. And obviously, as we approach the, as we go through fiscal year '24 and we're ending that year, we will be out of the the ESRB safety net as well. So that is a concern as we have when we look forward to fiscal year '25. So I wanted to kind of lay that land a little bit before we got into kind of the meat of the revenue neutral discussion, because there are some significant needs in a couple of these funds. Okay, so just to kind of start out as a reminder, the the revenue neutral rate is, was put into law, this whole process was put into statute, I think this is our third discussion on the revenue neutral rate. And it has to do with your mill levies compared to the amount of revenue you generate. So again, let's let's kind of back up. The mill levy is the tax rate that applies on property that taxpayers own. So if you own a home, you're paying property taxes based on a mill rate assessed by cities, counties, school districts, for the most part. Those are the big ones. We apply a tax rate on various funds. Some of that goes to the state, the other stays with us locally. The revenue neutral rate statute says you have to stay revenue neutral unless you tell the taxpayer in advance of your intent to not stay revenue neutral. And revenue neutral is you raise the same tax dollars in an upcoming year that you received in the current year. So and it has nothing to do with the mill levy, it's the dollars. And we're going to kind of demonstrate that. First, first slide here is amount assessed valuation. You can see as far as in Sedgwick County, the numbers are significantly higher for fiscal year '24. In the general fund, it's gone up 8.3% just assessed valuation. The average home went up 8.3% home slash property. And and there's different properties that go into these different categories. If we don't touch the mill levy, homeowners' taxes are going up because of assessed valuation, not because of anything we're going to do. I think that's an important point to make, because we get this when people start to to read this information, when they get their mailers and they see their taxes are going up, they're like, well, it's the school district, it's the city, it's the county. In this case, if we don't move a decimal point on that mill levy, homeowners are going to pay significantly more in taxes because their assessed valuation went up significantly. To stay revenue neutral would mean we would need to come down on the mill levy to offset that assessed valuation increase. And it's very difficult for governments to stay revenue neutral as well, because we're experiencing the same inflation that all other taxpayers are seeing. We are paying more for supplies, we're paying more for food, we're paying more for labor, we're paying more for equipment, fuel, the all of those major categories. So again, if we were to stay revenue neutral, would most likely mean we would need to cut services of some sort. So we, what we try to do as we bring some information to the board to consider is to stay as as close to low as we can, but cover our expenditures, right? So we, in some funds, we don't need a full 8% or 9%. In other funds, we may need the full 8% or 9%. And we're going to demonstrate that here. Let's start with the general fund, though. The general fund is actually exempted from the revenue neutral rate process. This is the dollars that are part of our mill levy, but we don't see them, they go directly to the state, and they are used to support education. We don't have it, you you can't change it, we don't have a choice, we have to apply it. 20 mills, raised $56.8 million in the '23 budget. It's with that increase, it's due to raise 61, almost $61.6 million with almost, not quite $4.8 million going to the state. They will capture that full 8.3% growth without changing the mill levy. That's the assessed valuation impact. If they had to stay revenue neutral, the mill levy would actually go down to 18.465 mills. But they don't, they're going to take that full, full amount of money. The capital outlay fund is the fund where we do have some ability to to look at that revenue neutral rate. It's also the fund that we have the most need financially. And you've heard about it, for me, you've heard about it from Luke, you'll hear about it more from Luke in the coming months. But there are significant capital outlay needs through the throughout the district. You can see I've highlighted kind of the differences. We are currently at eight mills in capital outlay. That raises $26.76 million of taxes that go into capital outlay. If we were to stay revenue neutral, which means only that same $26.76 million goes into capital, the mill levy would need to go down to 7.349 mills. But that means no new money in capital outlay for all of those things that we've talked about, including things that you saw on the agenda tonight, that you'll see on upcoming agendas, and that you'll hear from Luke as he gives you some facility condition information. It's, I I think I've shared with the board before, this is the one fund I will always recommend that we stay at eight mills because there is such a significant need in this fund for funding and to support our buildings because of their age and ongoing needs, which we've talked about. So that eight mills, which again, isn't changing from last year, but because of assessed valuation growth, will drive $29.13 million to the capital outlay budget, which is $2 million and change, 2.3 million. So that will help the fund combat inflation. It will help us continue to make progress on deferred maintenance and continue to hopefully look ahead for, you know, those needs that come up that we don't even know about yet. The East High cracking, those type of problems that that we that we can are always kind of concerned about. I'm going to stop for a minute just on this particular fund to see if there's any feedback from the board on capital outlay.
Julie?
Luke may talk about this, you know, what, in July, when we have, start having our condition report. But what, do you know currently what the average age of our buildings is at?
So we are at 60 years old on average. We have some buildings that are over 100 years, two or three, I think, three buildings over 100 years, maybe four. Some, there's there, I think it's one of the feeder patterns, and I want to say it might be the West High feeder pattern, the average age in that, if I recall, I think I had this, but I'll, but it was 77 years old in that particular area.
But we're up to 60.
We are, we are at, all buildings are at 60 years old, yes.
When you take the average. And I think when we did the last bond issue, weren't we at 55? So even though we did all of those improvements, all of that work, because of the fact that every year we, buildings get older.
We're going to get an average year older, right?
Then, yeah, then we're now at 60.
Exactly. Other discussion, as far as if the board would like to look at some different scenarios or if we're comfortable with us, this direction that we're heading of an eight-mill on the capital outlay. Now, you don't have to make a decision tonight, don't have to tell me, but if we are, if you're wanting me to look at some options here, I will make my frowny face, but I will bring back some, I will bring back some options.
Susan, I have just another comment, which maybe isn't useful to the public at all. But when when your valuation on your property goes up, and so you pay a little bit more tax, you also are now wealthier because the the property that you own, you know, increases your asset base. And so even though you're having to pay more money in taxes, your, the wealth that you have as an individual has increased because the, well, I realize that, but that's what I said, it may or may not be useful to folks, but 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 it is, it is a fact.
And if they sell that home, they can take the cash out, and it is the higher value that they get for selling the home at the higher value.
Yes.
I have a question. The the revenue neutral, we have had this discussion. And we gave you direction to go ahead and start looking at not us using that, but we will need to vote on this when?
So the Cedric County needs a, needs our decision on if we are intent to exceed revenue neutral rate by July 15th. We don't have a board meeting except for June 29th, so I will be asking for that intent. Does the board intend for us to exceed the revenue neutral rate? I will ask for that on June 29th.
Okay. And my second question is, if we do not, if we use our revenue neutral, we we move to the 8%, we we really are not raising taxes except for their property valuation goes up, but we're not raising our mill.
We will, we, more tax dollars will be, will be driven because of assessed valuation. It will not be because of direct increase action on our part. It will be the fact that we didn't reduce our mill levy because of that assessed valuation. So that's the, that's the argument that someone who is, you know, maybe not as, you know, supportive of 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 tax increases would say is, well, you could have reduced your mill levy because of the assessed valuation growth. And and you will see that we will do that where we can. And you'll see that here on the next slide, because we do have some room to do that. This particular fund, though, is is very difficult to not stay and capture the eight mills because it really has that level of need. In fact, if we could double that, that would be really great. But we won't, we can't, it's eight, eight mills is the max, can't go any higher. But that, it's that, that level of building need that we're seeing across, you know, across the district.
Right. I have one other question that's, that's a different kind of question, because you're projecting that we drop about 670 students this next school year.
Well, we, that's not, that one's not a projection, because we're using this year's enrollment for next year's budget, that's a firm number.
That's a firm number. Okay, that was my question.
Yes, that is a firm number.
Because I know we can take last year or the year before.
Right.
And we're taking.
Last year. It's this year, but it'll be last year here in a month.
We're with you.
Yes.
But but that 670 is a firm number.
Yes, that's a firm number.
Okay, that was my question. Diane?
I have the same question on the student enrollment. And then, sorry, I just forgot what I was going to ask. I was taking notes. Go on to, can you come back to it?
Okay, yes, Kathy?
Okay, I just want to make sure that I understand this before I sleep on this. Right. I do. Okay, if we stay at the mill levy, the benefit to the district is?
$2.3 million. $2.3 million.
If we lower the mill levy, the disadvantage to the district is?
There's no new tax dollars going into capital outlay.
Well, their, our taxes in the city are going to go up anyway. If, not because of what we decide.
Right, because again, we aren't the only taxing entity. If the city doesn't stay revenue neutral, if the county doesn't stay revenue neutral, their taxes are going to go up regardless.
But even if we stay revenue neutral, it's going to go up anyway.
Well, if we stay, if we drop our mill levy, and so then we take less taxes, they're, they won't pay as much as they would have because we reduced our mill.
But then the disadvantage to the district is we're going to be less that cash flow.
We're going to be short some funds.
Okay.
Right, a short, we're not, we're going to be, we're going to be flat in an environment where everything becomes more expensive by around 5% or 6% a year.
So it doesn't seem with common sense to lower it if things are going up.
We don't have, we don't have other ways to to drive funding into this fund.
Fill that gap, right. Okay, thanks, that's all I needed.
Okay, Diane?
Okay, sorry about that, I didn't write my question down, I got distracted. How much do we usually spend each year on this, on capital outlays?
Well.
Right, a short, we're not, we're going to be, we're going to be flat in an environment where everything becomes more expensive by around five or six percent a year.
So it doesn't seem with common sense to lower it if things are going up?
We don't have, we don't have other ways to, to drive funding into this fund.
Right, okay, thanks, that's all I needed.
Okay, Diane?
Okay, sorry about that, I didn't write my question down, I got distracted. Um, how much do we usually spend each year on this, on capital outlays?
Well, in a, in a, no, no, no. It, it, in a normal year, we're in a non-ESSER funding, you know, environment, we're probably in the forty million dollars of spend. Am I right? Yeah, about forty million dollars of spend. Right now, there's nothing normal about capital outlay because we've got ESSER projects running through that fund. So the spend in that fund is significantly higher than our, kind of our normal. Um, and that, again, we, depending on how much cash balance we have and what we know is coming, um, we sometimes will, you know, we'll budget for another four or five million dollars, or if there's a major, like, when the technology lease is up, we'll have to talk about if we need some more capital for, to replace some of that technology that we used, um, a lease and ESSER funds. Those, all that equipment's going to come due all at the same time. Um, and so we'll be having to look at what, what combination of mechanisms, funding mechanisms can we start to replace some of that equipment? And that's, again, going to be capital outlay and probably some sort of, of lease, a secondary lease for that, too. So there's just a lot of, there's just a lot of pressure, not only facility needs, but again, we talked a lot about that, close to forty percent of this fund is technology. And the, all of that continues to be more and more expensive year over year.
Could you expand on more of what is considered capital outlay and what isn't in account?
Sure. Um, the, capital outlay by statute, you're, so repairs, maintenance, new buildings, um, you can pay for uniforms, like, band uniforms. We typically don't, but you can. Technology, um, and, and you can pay for custodial, but again, we don't. Um, you cannot pay for teacher salaries, you cannot pay for general operational salaries. It is considered a restricted fund because it has very specific types of expenditures. And we really have focused ours primarily on the two, which is facility, support, and technology.
Okay, thank you very much, Susan.
I think just one more point that, that I'd like to make, and it's on your slide seven. Um, we are not only looking at a decline in enrollment, which drops our budget a little bit, we're also looking at our ask, at-risk numbers go down, which again, is another drop in, in our funding. And our COVID, the ESSER funds are going to be going away totally. So we're kind of in the perfect storm of, we might like to do it, but if we do, we don't have enough money to continue to do some things without making major cuts.
All of your, all of your backup and safety nets are, are going away. So that's why we, we, we will be, I can tell you tonight that we will be making the recommendation to the board to stay at the eight mils because of that, of that very fact.
Well, and then another factor, you know, Ernestine talked to us a couple of board meetings ago about wanting to fund, fully fund special ed, and what, it ended up being seven point five million, whereas seventy-three million or something like that was what was discussed.
As a matter of fact, it turns out that while we were last year at seventy-three percent of funding of special ed, while the, the law is ninety percent should be funded by the state, and last year we were at seventy-three percent, it turns out for the coming year, we're going to be at sixty-nine point six percent, not even at what we were last year in special ed.
So that was another funding source that we were kind of hoping that we might have that.
Right, that it wouldn't, it wouldn't be, because we have to meet special ed needs.
Absolutely, we can not.
There's a federal law, so we, there's no way, so we will have to take that out of the other funds to be able, we have to make up for whatever the state doesn't come up with in the feds.
Okay. I'm not seeing any more questions, so please continue.
Okay. So there's the general fund, what, what publishes is in the paper, and what goes out in the mailers, is you'll get the general fund rate at twenty mils, you'll see the capital outlay of eight. The other three that we assessed are kind of lumped into other funds. So we kind of wanted to show you what this looked like and what revenue neutral looked like before we kind of tell you the direction we're going to take. So right now, the bond and interest is sitting at seven point six eight two mils, generates about twenty-five and a half million dollars. The local option budget is fourteen point eight four mils, generates forty-nine million dollars. And then we are assessing a special liability fund, mill levy, which is primarily legal obligations that the district has to pay. Um, that's at point nine six two mils, generating almost three point two million dollars. So our mill levy for other funds is generating about seventy-eight million dollars in fiscal year twenty-three. To stay revenue neutral with that assessed valuation growth, we would need to reduce the bond and interest down to the seven point one one six, the LOB down to thirteen point seven and change, and then that special liability to point eight nine one. To stay at that same dollars of seventy-eight million dollars, that mill levy then becomes twenty-one point seven five five mils. Now, the bond and interest and the special liability, those we just assess based on our needs for cash. So, and so coming down on those is really a choice we can make. And you'll see, our recommendation, at least our early recommendation, is that we do come down on those two. We don't need the full valuation growth in those funds. And we had already shared with the board our intent to come down a little bit in bond and interest, and we'll come down in special liability. The problem with the LOB is it's a formula. The local option budget is based on a thirty-three percent rate on the general fund. And then the tax dollars offset against the state aid. So the more state aid we get, the less tax dollars we need, the more, the less state aid we get, the more tax dollars we need, but we cannot exceed thirty-three percent. That is capped. So this fund, if we could be, stay revenue neutral and the state aid stays the same, it means the local option budget can't go up to the hundred and thirty-four million dollars that we need to cover those fixed cost increases. We would have to stay at the hundred and twenty-nine million and start to make reductions to cover those fixed cost increases.
Does that happen this year or next year?
It would, this would be for the twenty-four budget. We wouldn't have to do anything for, twenty-three is good, if this be for twenty-four, we wouldn't have enough money in this fund to cover that four million dollars we just quoted you earlier on our fixed costs. So that, it's very difficult to stay revenue neutral in the LOB when you have utilities going up over two million dollars a year, when you have a transportation contract going up two and a half percent, when you have wages in that particular fund that we're trying to keep up with market wages in our, in our, for all of those operational positions. So it, it's just, it's, it's, it's difficult. If we wanted to, we would have to have some discussions on what we're not going to do on the LOB. So what that looks like from a recommendation standpoint is we are going to recommend a reduction in the mill levy for the other funds where we take about half of assessed valuation growth. So if, if we were going, we were going to take all of it, we, that would be an eight point three, eight point five percent increase. We need about four point three percent of that assessed valuation growth. And how it breaks down in the bottom chart, you can see where, I have the fiscal year twenty-three mil levy column, that's where we're at currently. The recommendation early, because we're, we don't have quite all our pieces to the puzzle yet, we don't have what state aid looks like in any of these funds, so we're hoping to get that here in the next week or so. Um, but bond and interest, we do recommend coming down to seven point one eight two mils, that might adjust a little bit more. Um, we do recommend coming down in the special liability to point six six two, but at least we need to stay flat in supplemental general, the LOB, in order to capture that growth. Some of that growth, not all of it, just some of it. We don't need it all.
Do you, is your thing not working?
Yeah, I don't have one.
Oh, you, you don't have one of these?
Uh-uh.
Oh, well, go ahead.
That's why I keep shouting at you.
I, I don't know why you don't have one.
I had to go fi, searching to find that, find the agenda, that's why I was using the paper agenda.
The question is, what would be the rationale for why we should go down instead of just stay?
Right. So on the special liability, it really is kind of a forecasting, um, exercise based on what we think we'll collect, even in just delinquency taxes in the next few years, based on that original point nine, um, nine six two mils. What do we think we're going to need? Um, a couple of the cases that we were a little concerned about have settled, and so we think we can come down on this fund and still be okay from a district-wide perspective in special liability. So that's the rationale, is we don't really want to overtax if we don't have a good reason to do that, just to build cash in an account. Um, we really do try to forecast and say, this is what we know, this is what we think might happen. We kind of balance that risk with, we do have contingency reserve, so if we are a little off, we do have a secondary option, so let's not, let's not tax more than we need to. And so that's the rationale on particularly special liability, why we think we can come down. The bond and interest is really a factor of, you're paying your bonds off, we haven't had a, a discussion on what happens and what timeline it might happen to future needs in this area. So we want to start to adjust for what the current debt load is, at least to, not, not so much that we risk the fund not having enough cash, right? And it's, we want to start going down slowly because we still have some big balloon payments coming, but we don't need to be at seven point six eight two mils. So we want to, again, where we can bring our taxpayers a little relief, we want to try to do that. And this is, this is a case where we think we can, and yet still meet our obligations. That supplemental general fund, though, again, because there are needs in this fund, four million dollars worth of needs, we do need to capture some of that growth. And so right now, our recommendation, we think will be, stay at least flat, mill levy, capture some growth there. That growth that we capture will be offset by the decreases in the other funds.
Julie?
I, I appreciate, um, your thinking in that regard relative to protect, uh, protecting that increase as much as is feasible for the taxpayers. But I would, but I would be curious just to see the numbers, that in the event that we didn't make those cuts, you know, what, what is the actual revenue raised amount, how much it would be?
Sure. You want, you want to see the, if we stayed at seven point six two in bonded interest?
And if we didn't change the special liability?
Yeah, I mean, overall, I think we would be, it would be basically a double, so we're at three point three, it'd be more like six point four million dollars, because again, we're capturing half, and that would be spread over bond and interest, um, special liability, a little bit more to the LOB, but we, we really won't need it there because we're, again, we're capped by formula. So again, that, that increase in the LOB, bonded interest, special liability, if we captured all growth, it would be six and a half million dollars, give or take.
So the total revenue would be more like eighty-seven as opposed to eighty-one?
It'd be more like eighty-four, eighty-five.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Diane?
Thank you, Susan. Can you talk to the fun, different funds have restrictions on them? So like the special liability, that's not going to be, we can't use that for building maintenance.
Correct.
So can you explain more of that?
Sure.
Of our restrictions?
Right, so the bond and interest is, is pretty straightforward, right? As the, as the, the board over the past twenty years have, have, we've gone through the bond process, and we put those out for an election, and we've been able to pass one in two thousand, one in two thousand and eight. Um, we use bond and interest to make those bond payments and interest payments over the life of the bond issue as they kind of go in and out. Um, there are three issues left outstanding, and they are in the course of paying off, it's around two hundred and change million dollars, two hundred and forty million dollars, give or take, of bond debt, and, 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 and that's just the principal, there's interest on top of that. So we assess a mill strictly to pay the bonds, and it can't be used for anything else, can't be transferred to anything else. It can sit there if we actually end up overtaxing, or it, that fund also earns interest. So if interest helps us and post, and we end up with cash in the bond and interest, it can sit there until the next bond is passed, but it has to be used for bond and interest. Um, special liability, again, it's specifically to legal torts and legal obligations that the district incurs and is ordered to pay by some sort of jurisdictional entity. So again, it can't be used for, like you said, capital outlay needs, it can't be used for wages. It is very specific, and it is considered a restricted fund. The supplemental general fund is, is not restricted, right? It, we can utilize it for the, the operational needs of the district. It is only, it, it, it just has a very specific formula that cannot be exceeded. So similar to capital outlay in that you cannot assess more than eight mils, in the LOB, you can't have, you can't assess more than your thirty-three percent of the general fund, which is a hundred and twenty, a hundred and thirty million dollars. So we can only tax and offset the cash balance and the state aid with tax dollars. That, and it, it, it really is an inverse situation. More state aid, we can tax less. If we have a high cash balance, we can tax less, and vice versa. But that, we cannot exceed that thirty-three percent. So it really, we are capped in a way based on the fact that it is a formula based on a percentage of the general fund.
Okay.
So, and due to, when you say that we can reduce the bond and interest in the special liability funds, those mill levies, you're assessing that on court cases?
Right, our forecast of what we think we need in cash in those funds to pay our bills.
Right. And that's why you're, we're able to recommend that?
Yes.
Is because of those reasons?
Right.
Okay, thank you, I just wanted to make sure that was clear.
I just, I feel pretty strongly, right, and really, this, I feel this way probably because the board has instructed us over the years to approach it, so it's kind of now embedded, in that where we can bring, bring tax relief to the taxpayer, only tax what we need to tax. And so that, we feel, we feel pretty good that what we're bringing as far as even this early recommendation does that.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate it.
I don't know if I'm supposed to ask questions or not. Could you, could you tell us, what does one mil mean for a taxpayer for a hundred thousand dollar house?
Uh, twelve to thirteen dollar increase.
Okay. So basically what we're recommending, what you're kind of recommending is a point eight decrease, so about ten dollars?
On a hundred thousand dollar home.
Yeah, on a hundred thousand dollar home. So, um, it would be, it doesn't add up to much, but it is something, but the offset is if that, if your home went from a two hundred thousand dollar home to a two hundred fifty thousand dollar home, then the point eight mil decrease isn't going to feel like a cut, a tax cut, even though it is.
Right. I mean, at, at an eight point three, eight point five percent valuation increase, not much is going to feel like a tax cut. Um, we'd have, we'd, again, we would have to significantly go in, and, and not just us, the county, the city, everyone would have to really reduce. And so, and that, again, it's really just not feasible when all, all governmental agencies, just like everyone else, are battling five plus percent inflation.
I don't see any more questions, so please continue.
Great. So based on kind of this feedback, we'll bring back kind of a formal recommendation then on June twenty-ninth and ask the board for the, for a motion to, um, agree for the intent to exceed the revenue neutral rate in the particular funds. Um, and just a kind of a reminder of this timeline, you can see that the, the county has done their part, and they've given us the, the information, we've done some early estimates. Um, you, you'll give us a recommendation on June twenty-ninth, and then we will probably run a first pass through the budget forms before we send it to the county to be sure we're pretty close, because we've seen that before where information we give at the board table, then if it's different on those mailers, people get, really get a little itchy. So we want to really try to be spot on and, and not have even come in lower, because once you give it, your information to the county, you cannot go higher. You can go lower, but you cannot exceed once you set it with the county. And so that June, that July twentieth is an important date. Um, this year is the last year that we don't have to pay for this mailer. By statute, we get the, we get to foot the bill for this mailer next year, which will be about twenty-five, twenty-six thousand dollars to mail to every Cedric County taxpayer, their mill levy increase, that's our share. Um, and then, then we'll have the, we'll include that revenue neutral hearing with our notice of the budget hearing, we'll do it at the same time, and then we'll certify everything by nine twenty and October first. And then very quickly. And then very quickly, kind of just to close, is just a quick reminder, we just went through the next steps, quick reminder of what's coming up for the board related to the Kansas Statute 721163, which is the needs assessment, state assessment work that the board did for the first time last year. So just to share, again, the needs assessment is conducted at each building across our district. This year, this particular topic was included as an agenda item for site councils that schools held. So they had a lot more involvement with stakeholders than the first year we did this when we got the change very late. So we did get a lot more stakeholder involvement, more of building team leadership involved in the process. So we feel very, we feel a lot better prepared as we go into this year for needs assessment than we were the same time last year. We are now, again, in the process of accumulating all of that data to put in a book for the board that they can look through their schools in particular and see what that feedback was related to, you know, how to a school assess what they need in order to get their students to achieve better results on the state assessments. And we'll, again, include this in our future board presentations, that process, those themes that came out. And this year, we even were a little bit more intentional on budget increase requests that would come out of those needs assessment. And where we can, we'll cover that with the board of what that looked like. We, I think we have, we'll have that information ready for you and we'll cover that with you in mid-July. And then, again, we'll make sure that we are still on track with what the board had established last year was that state assessment improvement of 1 to 5% out of Level 1. And what we were happy to see, again, with Gil's presentation tonight, that we actually met that first-year goal, which I think we all are very happy about. I think we did have another, another related goal we might want to look at related to how quickly we'll get to threes and fours at 1 to 5%. If we're closer to 1, we may have maybe overshot that one a little bit, we might want to revisit that. And so we'll have some discussions on that. But that work will be happening in July and August. So we covered all of that. And then, so just to kind of wrap up tonight, we gave you a first look at, or a final look at the anticipated revenues, first look at the fixed costs, but we don't anticipate too many major changes there. We talked about the revenue neutral data that came in from Cedric County and I think I have a pretty, pretty good feel for the board would like us to go for our June 29th meeting. So I appreciate that. Thank you. We will, we will continue to refine those estimates with data we know is coming at the budget workshops KSD will be holding here in the next week and a half. And then we, again, reminded the board about its needs assessment and state assessment obligations, which we will start kind of working on in earnest in July. So I think we've covered a lot of the questions along the way, but if you have any additional questions tonight, I'm happy to answer those.
Diane?
Last year, we mailed those assessments, that booklet. But when can we expect those this year?
Probably around the same time. I think we mailed those out around the 10th, maybe the 7th, a little earlier. I would say it's about the same, will be about the same time.
Of July. Okay. Thank you.
Okay. You've done a great job. Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
There are no more questions. Next idea? Next item?
Next item, under miscellaneous, superintendent's report.
All right. I got a few things tonight. First off, we had a pretty cool event today at the Future Ready Center that Cheryl and Diane were both able to attend. We hosted the Greater Wichita Partnership, which is our economic development group for the region, and they had their investor meeting there. So there was about, probably about 150 people there, leaders in the community, business leaders and nonprofits. And we got to showcase ourselves and wow everybody with the Future Ready Center. So that was really cool. The number one question I got was, so, so when, you know, when is it official or when do you start taking over? Which is a hard thing to answer at this point because although July 1st is the official date, you know, here I am tonight. So it's been a great transition with Alicia. I'm excited to be here tonight with my first kind of regular board meeting. And just want everyone to know, Winnie and I are putting plans together for what July through December looks like for our strategic plan that we've mentioned a few times tonight, what listening sessions look like, what feedback looks like and all that kind of stuff. So I've already started a lot of that, as you know, through my, my reports that I have given to you. It's going, going really well. So keeping up with all of that. I do want to share a little bit about what we're, what's going on in the summer because, you know, there is a myth that we take summers off and a lot of teachers would say that is not the case. So we have summer school in full swing. We had a week of extended EOL or extended learning for students. And then a number of trainings for teachers. So we have teachers in letters training, adaptive schools, restorative practices. We had a mental health training with Terry's group at this service center, curriculum work groups, avid path training last year, a tech summit, special ed summit. So whole lot of stuff going on with our teachers, putting a lot of work in. As Sean mentioned, the fine arts camp, we had a pretty robust option for strings and instrumental and drama and everything else. So I was able to come hear my incoming seventh grader play her trumpet at the showcase there, which was cool. Not that it's all about my kids, but we also have camp hype going on. And so one of my incoming freshmen will be doing camp hype with the workforce center. Those, our, our counseling staff supports those a lot in conjunction with the workforce center. And then we have all sorts of sports activities going on, weights, summer training. So my incoming sophomore has been up here playing soccer. So lots and lots of stuff going on. We also have graduation and I'm glad that Gil was able to explain kind of what he did with graduation because it isn't, even though we had graduations, it's not over. We have kids doing all sorts of credit recovery. June 22nd, we'll have our summer graduates and we hope to have about 40 to 50 students that we celebrate that night with that. River Fest, we've mentioned a few nights, or a few times tonight already. We will be out in full force giving away books at Juneteenth at the celebration there. Winnie and her team will be out there. And I think that's it. So our next meeting will be here in a few weeks and it'll be here before we know it. So I think that's all I had. Thank you, Cheryl.
Thank you. Next item?
Next item, Board of Education report and requests.
Okay. Start with Kathy.
Well, I had the privilege to attend Wilbur's eighth grade promotion and Benton's fifth grade promotion, as well as Northwest High School's graduation. And Cheryl, it was a delight to be with you at that graduation and watch your grandson graduate. I attended the Admiral's Breakfast for the River Festival and there is a seminar workshop that I attended for the Kansas School Board Resource Center on creating an effective budget. So I'm ready, Susan, okay? I'm ready. And I attended ballet in the park with Metropolitan Ballet where some of our students were performers and that was also very delightful. That's it.
Very good. Thank you. Julie?
Yeah, as far as my report tonight, I am this board's representative at the Kansas Association of School Boards. And we had our, our meeting a couple of weeks ago that we typically have at this time of year. And of course, they're standard business items like we do here. But one of the primary things that we learned as far as an education piece for all of the various board members that were in attendance is they did review with us the work that had been done by Kansas Association of School Board in Topeka this year prior to the changes of the laws. And of course, Ernestine is the legislative representative on that for the Kansas Association of School Board. I'm the, the board member representative on behalf of our team. But I did bring for everyone tonight, just, this is just a news article, but it just summarizes the highlights of what was decided in the legislature this year. And just a few items I'm just gonna identify for all of us. Senate Bill 113 proposed changes to the method of determining state financial aid, but Governor Kelly line vetoed that change so that school districts across the state are, were still able to use the preceding two years to calculate state finance aid as opposed to the change that was proposed. And it didn't seem like that is going to impact us, but it does impact particularly rural districts across the state. There was an extension, extension of the high density at-risk weighting sunset, which was something that Susan had spoken with us several times about. We already talked about special ed funding increasing seven and a half million as opposed to the 72 million that Ernestine had spoken with us about. It did include statewide $5 million for school safety, which allows school districts to purchase communication equipment to better communicate with law enforcement and to purchase the naloxone to combat fentanyl poisoning. And I know we, as a district, had already approved that for our district, but you'll remember that the, the students on Alicia's student advisory team came and spoke with us about how important that was to them. So now that will be available for other rural districts across the state. And then there were some additional funds for various programs, parents' teachers, professional development for teachers, early childhood educational literacy and some technical ed. Small amounts, but still it's great. So, but like I said, I passed out the handout for y'all to have more information regarding those changes. That's all I have to report.
Thank you. Hazel?
I have no report or request.
Okay, thank you. Diane?
I wrapped up the graduations. So Heights High School had their graduation since our last board meeting. And then I also went and spoke to, at the invitation of Councilman Brandon Johnson, spoke to his District One breakfast about the year-end wrap-up where I was able to play the video that our communications team put together and give some interesting facts about our district to the District One people in attendance and talk about some upcoming future things that they should be aware of. So, and then I just had a number of individual meetings with various stakeholders and parents in the community. So stay in touch. Thank you.
Thank you. I, obviously, all of us have been to graduations and that's always such a fun time of year. And Kelly is exactly right. We haven't stopped. We're still going. So, you know, we're still moving around in our district and going to schools, summer programs, et cetera. So, and it was a very wonderful day today. We were able to showcase our district and that was very, very positive. So. Thank you for setting that up. Stan?
No report or requests.
Ernestine?
Well, recently, for the first Friday, I haven't been on the Zoom call because from January until the finally, the legislature went home, every, every Friday I was getting the reports of what was up and these things that Julie just reported about, about how they're going to be impacting us. I really, in general, I think that the legislature did some good stuff for, for the schools in general. And I was particularly impressed that the legislature looked out for some of the smaller districts that they, particularly out in the rural areas. There are some schools that are the center of their community and if there's some problems with funding for those schools, it's like the school dries up, the community dries up. So the legislature this year, watching it, has been an interesting thing. And thank you, Julie, for giving us this report. I have, as usual, I just love watching joyful teenagers who are part of the, a little bit shy, a little bit scared, a little bit proud, a little bit outrageously optimistic about the future. And it always, the graduations just give me such hope for the future. I love going to the graduations. Thank you.
Okay. Next item?
Next item, new business?
I'm seeing none. Next item?
Next item, executive session?
Diane?
I moved the board recess into an executive session to discuss a settlement related to civil mediation with the board's legal counsel pursuant to the exception for matters which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship under the Kansas Open Meetings Act. And the open meeting will resume in this room at 9:05.
Is there a second?
I second.
Okay. Diane made the motion and Julie seconded that we move to executive session?
I have to raise my hand.
Okay, that's fine. Okay.
I'm a Y.
Yep. Motion passes 7-0. I assumed if you were raising your hand now, you were a Y. So we are in executive session. We are back from executive session. No action is taken. Next item?
Next item, exec, executive session?
Diane?
I moved the board recess into an executive session to discuss pending negotiations between the Board of Education and the United Teachers of Wichita pursuant to an employer, employee negotiations exception under the Kansas Open Meetings Act. And the open meeting will resume in this room at 9:25.
I second.
Motion was made by Diane and seconded by Kathy. Please raise your hand if you, motion passes 4-0. We are in our second executive session. From executive session, no action has been taken. Next item?
Next item, adjournment?
Second.
It was moved by Stan, seconded by Kathy, that we adjourn the meeting. Please raise your hand if you agree. Motion passes 4-0. Thank you.
See you, guys.
Now.